One, three, two, one.
Good evening and Happy New Year. This is the first meeting of the Planning Board for this calendar year 2019, but the 12th meeting of the fiscal year 2019. I am Cheryl Taggias, the Chair of the Planning Board.
Denny Swenson, member.
Rich Beeler, member.
William Clark.
William Clark, Planning Director.
April Anderson Lamro, member.
Brian Furz, member.
Okay, so on our agenda tonight, we had a couple, one, at least one or two things changed a little bit at the last minute. So, at 7:15, we have a public hearing for the Bent's, or Seven Pleasant Street Site Plan Approval. And at 7:30, we have the continuation of the special permit hearing for the Walcott Woods Project. So, we have about 11 minutes before that first hearing. So, maybe what we'll do is ask Bill for a staff report. But before that, we'll talk about the next meeting date is January 10. That meeting is going to start at 6 o'clock, and it will be held at Milton High School in the...
Milton Access Studios, which is room 245. You go in the front door, go straight down, it'll be on the left-hand side, there'll be an arrow there pointing everybody in.
So, that 6 o'clock to 7 o'clock, right, approximately? Will be the Urban Land Institute Technical Assistance Panel Presentation. And then, following the conclusion of that, the Planning Board will continue our meeting. I think that meeting is also posted for the Select Board.
It is.
And, obviously, all are welcome. It'll be their study is East Milton Square, and they will be spending the entire day in Milton. And they have already been spending some time getting prepared. So, I think that will be an interesting presentation. And then, our next Planning Board meeting will be on the 24th. Bill?
Can I go back to the high school for one second? One of the reasons for putting it at the studio is, we would've had to stay with the ULI presentation at the library, we would've had to break to come back here, because the library closes at a certain hour. And it takes X amount of time to break down the TV over there, bring the TV back to here. The other part is, the ULI presentation would've been taped, whereas by bringing it to the high school, it will be live. And there is no disconnect between the end of the ULI presentation and the Planning Board continuing its meeting, moving into the public hearing.
Do you want, since we have a few minutes, do you want to explain what they're going to be looking at, what we've asked them to look at?
Sure. I did give you a copy of the agenda for January 10, which one side has the agenda, the second side has the stakeholder information. We've asked them to take and look at the business district and the fringe of the business district in East Milton Square. There will be 11 people from the Urban Land Institute coming. They will meet here at 8 o'clock. We will go to the square, do an onsite walk around the square, answer their particular questions. They'll come back and they'll meet with the stakeholders, starting at 10 o'clock. There's two different groups. First one's at 10, second one's at 11. We have lunch delivered to them at the library. They'll work right through lunch. The lunch is also with elected officials, should elected officials want to come. But at the same time, they are going to start their gathering of information. From 1 to 5, they do the team charrette, just their staff and their group. If they have questions, they'll call and ask. We're not allowed to participate in it. At 5 o'clock, we'll have dinner delivered to them at the library. At 6 o'clock, we expect to start the presentation at the Milton Access Studio.
So, I mentioned earlier, I joined Bill today with the group at a briefing session. And the composition of the group that will be doing this charrette includes someone from a traffic consulting firm, Howard Stein Hudson, architect, a landscape architect, developer, I don't remember all the other, but it's a good cross-section.
Mass development.
Mass development, a good cross-section of disciplines that we'll be looking at. Some of the things we asked them is, how should we design a public process to solicit support or solicit feedback on ideas for a mixed-use overlay, possible 4DR overlay? Some of this came out of the discussion about, can the town be more proactive about planning in East Milton Square? So, this was the Planning Board's first step with this beyond our survey last year. So, the group has done this for Milton before, in Milton Village, in Central Ave, right?
In Central Ave. We had them do the Central Ave Business District. And that went 15 years. And what they came up with then is now going to be built on the Hendry's site. So, it shows that, no, it doesn't happen in two or three months, but it didn't sit and languish either, so.
Okay.
So, we participate at 10 and noon?
In 6.
Six.
You're not in the stakeholder groups. You can go to lunch.
Oh, okay.
So, the stakeholder groups are composed of four members each session. Four members from the Neighborhood Association, Bill, four members from the business community?
We had landowners, business owners, and we asked the Chamber of Commerce to give us two people for each group. We asked the Neighborhood Association to give us two from each group. The first group has two people from the Neighborhood Association, the second one has three people. No big deal either way. I think it's 10 at each one. That was their optimum number. They felt if you get bigger, it starts to get a little bit, because you have 11 people on the panel, and you have 10, more than 10 people, you start to get, you know, how much can I do in an hour?
So, Bill, for the Neighborhood Association representatives, can you just explain how those folks were selected?
Sure. We sent an email to the President of the East Milton Neighborhood Association, Steve Reins, back in December, asking for four people. We got the people last night. We broke them up, put them into the two groups. We asked the Chamber to put in people, and we have the landowners. The Chamber gave us two from each one.
Okay.
We have a select, one select going to each meeting, too. That will be our elected official.
April?
Who's sitting on for mass development?
Mary Anna.
Mary Anna McCormick.
I don't know her.
Vice President of Business Development.
Any other questions? No. Okay. Bill?
I'm sorry, yes, I do have questions. So, it's 6 o'clock for the presentation, and then, is there anything after the presentation?
They'll be writing a report, or providing a report.
But I mean publicly in the hearing. Is it just the presentation and then...
Once their presentation, they're done. We get their draft.
Yep.
About two weeks later, we get their finals.
And then, what are, is that the extent of our discussion of that?
Of that topic, yes.
Of that topic, thank you.
But then, we have a meeting of our own now.
We continue with our meeting, where we know we have, at least on the agenda at that meeting, the continuing of this hearing of the Walcott.
And that will be at Town Hall or Milton High?
Milton High.
Okay. We can stay in there till 10.
So, we'll need to make that announcement, too, when we get to that hearing.
Here's the agenda for the Milton Access TV Studio, room 245. So, you're, this is the January 10 agenda. So, we'll go from new business to here. I put down 7:30. If it's less, and you want to go to 7, 7:15, let me know, and I'll have it revised again.
Rich?
After you're done with this, can we talk about the 24th?
Do you have the agenda for the 24th? Do you have a draft agenda for our meeting on the 24th, Bill?
No.
Do we know of anything? We do know we're going to have a public hearing for the two articles, right?
Yes.
And Walcott Woods will be on again.
And Walcott Woods will be on again. We also have the draft of the special permit decision and the site plan approval, amended site plan approval decision. So, of Milton Marketplace, 333 Brushhill Road, Thayer Nursery and Thomas Nursery. Because 90 days from the close of the public hearing, which was November 8, is when we have to issue our decisions. 90 days puts us at...
Who could we put Walcott Woods off?
I'm not saying it's on the 24th that we have to have those, but those are coming up. We have to double-check the 90-day period, but we can't, if we want to have discussion of it and revise it, we can't wait until, you know, the 90th day, unless we all are comfortable thinking about it.
That's not necessarily true, because you can't ask for an extension from the applicant, and if the applicant doesn't grant the extension, you can just deny the permit.
True.
So, we can always get an extension if we need to.
So, 333, we have to see, because we've never seen any of that text.
Yeah, they've been working on it.
The other, I mean Milton Marketplace, we already voted on it.
I'm not worried about that one.
Yeah, I'm not worried either. We just have to read it and make sure it's consistent with what we expected. What was the third one? Or was that...
Thayer.
Thayer and Thomas.
I was just asking.
Thayer's easy, that's just taking Maggie's name off.
Thomas is fairly straightforward, too.
Yeah.
So, I'm just saying that those are the things that are in our pipeline coming forward, and they don't all have to be on the 24th, but the public hearing has to be on the 24th to meet the warrant, right?
I was just asking, because I got, just put on a flight back from Texas on the 24th, so I'm going to be, I'm trying to change it, get it really early, but as it stands now, I'd be very late.
Have you missed one of the meetings on Walcott?
Yeah, so I can't miss it, so I'm trying to...
Is there another day that week that works?
I don't want to make everybody move their schedule, I just, I'm just...
What time?
I didn't get a direct flight, so.
Yeah. What time are you scheduled now?
To come back, it's like 8 o'clock, so.
It's 8 o'clock.
So, I'm trying to, and I think there was early a flight, so I just want to...
Okay, so you'll let us know?
I'll let you know tomorrow.
But if we put Walcott off...
I think we can. There's so much more to do.
Well, there is so much more to do, but for it to take up every single meeting, it's like, kind of unfair to everything else, like...
Yes, I'm worried, I mean, I'm worried we'll start bumping into April.
And then, we'll have, again...
What happens if we bump into April?
If we have an election, so if we don't have continuation of the five of us who started it, then we'll be left with the four. Then, it will need to be unanimous decision at four. Special permits require four, four out of five votes, and somebody coming in can't vote on something that started before they came in.
Right.
So, on the other item, just before we just have to review the permits, there's no reason why we couldn't do that next week, right?
Unless I do what's...
Should we take, like, one?
Can't, can't.
Sure.
Oh, the publicary's closed.
You mean the special permits?
Publicary's closed, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, the permits, I mean, if they're already written, like, the two nurseries are pretty easy.
Have to make sure that Rich can get back, that's all.
So, the word of those are is...
What about the 10th?
So, on...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just to get a few things off our agenda for the 24th, because that seems like kind of a lot.
I did think of something. For 333 Brushhill Road, I made like a big checklist of everything we talked about, so if I could get that before the meeting, it would save us time at the meeting, just...
Oh, yeah, I think we all made it well in advance, because that one's kind of...
So, John Flynn, Town Council John Flynn and Kevin Freitag have been working with the council for the developer and the association. And they sent draft documents for me to review, which didn't have everything that we discussed at our meeting, so they're working on. So, when they get their sort of draft of all of that, that at least in my records and notes and watching the tape is in, then we'll have it distributed.
Okay, sounds good.
And then, on Thomas and Thayer, the applicant's attorney drafted decision, which I reviewed and I sent to Town Council to review. And Lauren drafted Milton Marketplace. She sent it to me for review. There were some things I wanted her to change. She sent it back to me, and I'm going to review it again. So, it's close on all of this one, and then, you know, so they're in the works. But I think we could, we could probably take some of them.
Even if any of them are ready.
Any are ready, we should do it.
Yeah, so, Bill, we can talk about that and see which ones we can put up. 333 may not be ready, because of the, it's all part of that legal decision.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I think with that now, we can go to our public hearing, unless we can...
We need to do citizen speak, Cheryl.
I'm sorry, I always pass over citizen speak. Is there anyone here who would like to address the board on a topic that's not part of our two public hearings? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the public hearing. Again, sorry about that. So, the Bent's Site Plan Approval, I believe the applicant is here. You want to come forward?
Hello? Good evening. It's necessary to have my glasses, so.
I'm with you, I have mine.
I represent the applicant, Falcone. And this is an application for site plan review for Seven Pleasant Street, which is, we call it the GH Bent Building. And with me tonight, I have Steve Tedesco, who is the designer for the building, and Jeff Hassett, who is the engineer from Morse Engineering.
Again, Steve and Jeff, thank you.
I have a few copies to give the Planning Board. I have an updated denial letter from the Building Commissioner. It doesn't correct the site plan review requirement, but there were a couple of other things in the zoning that were corrected, because the plan was revised after the first submission to the Building Commissioner. So, you should have a copy of that updated letter. I believe there's been, you've all received a letter from Brian Walsh. I brought copies of it, but I think you may have received it by email. So, I'm just providing copies of that letter. It's a letter of support. Thank you. And then, I have here color copies that the designer is going to explain to you, but there's a copy here for each of you to look at. They show the front facade of Bent's, and then they show detail plans for each floor. And you really need a larger copy to see the details, so I'm just seeing if this is all, let's see, 1, 2, 3. There's one copy for file, and then there's a copy for each member. This should be enough, but I have more. And then, when the engineer, so, what I'd like to do is to begin with, you know, not as detailed a description of the project as you received in my application, but sort of a summary presentation. I'm not going to get into a lot of detail about either the design of the building or the site plan, because the engineer should explain the site plan to you. And Steve Tedesco will talk about the inside design and the spaces in all three floors of the building. So, okay. So, first of all, Falcone's hired me at least three years ago, before they even purchased the building. They were interested in whether they might be able to do some kind of project of Bent's. They were primarily interested in the building, because it is an historic structure, and they've been here for many years, and they wanted to see the structure preserved, but they weren't really sure what was possible. We still don't know. That's why we're here before the Planning Board, and we're going, we're also before the Board of Appeals. But between the time that they first approached me and now, they have done a lot of research. I did some historical research at the Registry of Deeds, that kind of thing. And one of the first things I noticed, which every other attorney that's worked with this property has noticed, is that there was a right-of-way to the left of the property, and at that time, nobody seemed to know who had the right to that right-of-way, who owned it, who had the right to use it. And, excuse me, for many, many years, since the building was built in 1895, GH Bent had been using that as a driveway or an accessway to the rear of their property. So, I did advise, I did suggest to Falcone Properties that they go to land court, they hired an attorney, and they filed an adverse possession claim, and they were successful in establishing title to that piece of property. So, that's pretty important, because now, instead of being 9,000 square feet, the site is about 18,000 square feet. It means that they have clear rights to use that way. If they didn't need to use it for access, they could do more with it, but they have to be able to get to the back of their property, and cars have to be able to pass in two directions. So, the plan that we're going to be reviewing later shows only a couple of parking spaces along the building. The parking is in the back of the building. But the right-of-way extends further into the back than the original lot, so by acquiring the right-of-way, they did acquire additional land to use for parking. So, that was an important step for them. They then, by that time, they had purchased the property. And we continued, so, we started to look at a lot of different possible options. First and primary purpose or objective was to keep the existing uses that seemed to have support, and the café on the first floor has been a well-supported use. Over the years, there've been three or four different owners have operated it, and they've operated in a little bit different fashion, but for the most part, it's just been a café where you buy sandwiches and take them out. And you can buy, you could buy bread and cakes, the bakery use has continued in the building. On the third floor of the building, the office use has always existed and has continued to exist. And there is a current tenant who intends to stay there. So, there's really no change, other than the addition of bathrooms. There are no bathroom, handicapped accessible bathrooms on the third floor right now, planned for the third floor of the building. So, that's, so, the purpose here was to find uses that could preserve the exterior of the building, did not impose significantly more parking burden than the existing uses, but most importantly, that we're looking for uses that can generate some revenue, because all of the prior owners have found that it's impossible to maintain the building, and they have not been able to renovate it, because it's too expensive. So, it's, this is a typical historic building. It really doesn't have much of any parking. We've created some parking by getting the right-of-way. It historically existed as a commercial use, it's in a residential district, and all three buildings, floors of the building, each floor being about 3,000 square feet, had commercial use going on. It was a very busy site when the bakery was in full swing, and early on, when carriages came back and forth to pick up products and deliver them to be shipped. And it continued to be a busy site, but by 1995, the owner's son, Jim Perotti, Eugene Perotti, was looking for some new ways of using the building, and he applied for a permit to run a café on the first floor, and meanwhile, to continue the bakery use and the office use. Then, in 2000, in 1999, he asked for permission to put some 16 outdoor seats in. That was approved. In 2009, the seating is a temporary approval, it has to be renewed, and it has been. 2009, there was an application to add an apartment to the rear, 1,500-square-foot apartment addition. That was approved as a special permit by the Board of Appeals. And meanwhile, the café use continued throughout, and it's still active, except that the lease has expired, and the Falcone's have not found a new tenant yet, because they're waiting to see what happens with these permit applications. So, we came up, we were dealing with an existing condition of a triangular building site. It's about 18,000, it's almost 19,000 square feet. And this is a three-story building on a sloping site. So, at the front of the building, the basement floor is the ground floor. At the rear of the building, the first floor is the ground floor. And then, there's a second floor that's accessed by elevator and stairways. It's historic, was constructed in 1896, and housed a bakery business that made water crackers, bread, cookies, and cake. At least 10 to 20 employees worked at the site throughout this period, and the owners lived in the house next to the site. That's no longer owned by the owners of this property, but up until fairly recently, it was. There were large bakery ovens on the first floor, store on the ground floor, offices on the second floor. In the year 2000, the building was placed on the National Register of Historic Places as the oldest active manufacturing facility in Milton. After the Falcone's purchased in 2017, they replaced siding on the exterior, they replaced all the windows, they cleaned the interior extensively. There was a lot of just dirt and refuse and bad things in the interior of the building. So, it's clean now, but it's still in its original state. So, the wiring, the plumbing, the elevator are all defunct. They really all have to be replaced. In addition, the building will require a fully sprinklered system. The cooking facility should have proper vents that go out through the center of the roof, that will have to be constructed. Grease vents, grease traps need to be, none of this was in the original building. It sort of went along from year to year, with minimal work being done, so they could get their permits from the Board of Health. We reached a point, the condition of the building continues to deteriorate, it wasn't in good shape when the Falcone's bought it. It's not going to remain as an historic building, unless we can find some uses that work in this location. We met with the Historical Commission, and they told us, and they agreed with us, that for them, it's preserving the exterior that's important. It's not really their job to find a use for the interior, but they recognize that you have to find new uses for these buildings, or they just won't survive. So, and the uses always require some compromise, because usually, the parking is not sufficient, according to modern standards, and you have to find uses that can work with that condition. But they're very supportive of preserving the building. The proposal is, therefore, to continue each of the existing uses. So, on the third floor, or the second floor, depending on how you describe the floors, is an office space, and it's going to continue as an office space. The middle floor, it was the bakery, it had huge old ovens. It's currently housing a caterer in what's remains of the kitchen area. And in, what we're proposing is to place six small apartments on that middle floor, and demolish the rear addition, which was not a very well-constructed addition. The rear addition is 1,500 square feet footprint. So, by removing it, you are reducing the footprint of the building by 1,500 square feet. And we would propose taking that space, 1,500 square feet, moving it into the middle floor of the building, and adding the remaining middle floor space to create six small apartments. Would have a bike storage area, there'd be a small common area for residents of the apartments to use. That would take up the entire middle floor. The first floor of the building would have continued uses of café, and the catering, which is on the middle floor now, would be moved down to the first floor, because the first floor will be completely renovated with new kitchen equipment, and the two kitchens will be side by side, and the vents can be created in an efficient way on the first floor.
Excuse me, Marion?
Yes?
I just want to make note that the structure that we're removing is approximately about 2,200, 2,200 square feet, and presently is a two-bedroom apartment.
Yes.
So, we are removing that for the parking.
Two-bedroom apartment and a third little room, so it's a pretty big apartment. That's right. So, there was a comment in the newspaper this week, which was accurate. A member of the Board of Appeals said, "Well, this is the most complicated proposal we've ever seen." And I know why they're saying that, because in order to do this, we need a variance for the apartment use, because the multiple residential units are not an allowed use under Milton Zone. So, you'd need a variance to do that. The other uses all are modifications, but they require amendments to the existing permits. So, there's a long list of amendments that we would require, and in addition to that... And in addition to that, there are some smaller variances relating to setbacks for the parking and that kind of thing. Because the parking, while we've done as much as we can on the site, does, is not 10 feet from the sideline, it's eight feet in certain areas. In the rear, it's right on the back lot line, there aren't any houses there. We're proposing four side-by-side or stacked parking spaces for employees in the rear. We have no zoning that allows that. We have to have a variance in order to do that type of parking. So there's a long list of relief that we've requested of the Board of Appeals.
So Marion, may I interrupt you right there, please?
Yes.
Because I just want to explain process a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
This is one of those, we've had, I think 475 Adams was also like this, where there's jurisdiction at the Board of Appeals and there's jurisdiction at the Planning Board. The Planning Board with site plan approval, we're looking at the design characteristics primarily because the Board of Appeals is really looking at the use and the variances related to that. Again, this is a building that was operating since the late 1800s, so obviously it existed as that commercial use before the zoning was adopted. And so it has continued with that use through the Board of Appeal, really, through various permits that they've issued since that time. So that's why there's the two different jurisdictions again. I did watch the tape of the, I think it was December 13th Board of Appeal meeting, where they were, they did express an interest in our board's opinion about the uses, the requested use and the use variance. But that's not for us to approve. That's for us to give some feedback back to the Board of Appeal. So I just want to make sure that we all understand what our role is in this. And so I think what's going to happen is we're going to give some ideas and give some feedback. It'll go back to the Board of Appeal. We might write a letter, you know, outlining what our opinions were. Goes back to the Board of Appeal, and then it'll come back to us for a final approval. Is that the way you envision it, Marion?
I think that that's the way it needs to happen. I mean, in these cases, I always feel as if we should almost have a joint hearing, but it doesn't work out that way for scheduling reasons and a lot of other reasons. But there's no question, particularly in this case, the Board of Appeals is very interested in the Planning Board's views because it is a planning kind of proposal. We're proposing a different type of mixed use on a very small scale and in a pre-existing non-conforming building that's currently commercial. And so it's, it's a new proposal in a sense, although you're looking at things like this, I think, in some of the other zoning that you have under consideration. And it's difficult for a Board of Appeals to just sit down and decide something like that without getting feedback from the town's planners. So they're very interested in what you think, and so are we. I mean, that's, of course. It is, the only purpose to our application legally is that because we're proposing multiple residential units, we need site plan approval. We're not changing the exterior of the building, we're not changing the, the space around it, although we're creating parking and that kind of thing. We're not changing the topography or anything like that. Those are all things that you might have to address if we were, if we were building a new building, new commercial building. So, that's quite correct, and that will be, the process will be something like that. Okay, so, just a couple of, of other points. There's a lot more detail in the application narrative, but we're proposing to continue the café, we want to continue the 16 outdoor seats, we want to create indoor seats when the outdoor seats are not in use. We will have space to do that if the, if the interior on the first floor is renovated. There's really no good space for it now. And, but we are not proposing increasing the seating. This is because of the parking. We'd all like, it would be nice to have more seating, but there's just a limited amount of parking at the site. So right now, we're proposing the same parking, but we'd like to have indoor when the outdoor is not in use. That's, that requires an amendment to the special permit from the Board of Appeals. The catering use is a, is a caterer who creates meals and delivers them. So there is no commercial traffic at the facility for the catering use. We're increasing the net, the, the amount of apartment space about 1,100 square feet, from 1,500 square feet to 2,648 square feet or thereabouts. And we want to divide it up into smaller apartments. The reason for that is, is after quite a bit of research and looking around and talking to people, the Falcones have had interest expressed from employees at Milton Hospital, from teachers at Milton Academy, and from just individuals who might be looking for their first or second apartment when they're just starting out, they want a small space. But they like this idea of, of it being a mixed use. It's a building that's on a, on a, it's on a bus line that goes to Ashmont. You don't, wouldn't have to have a car if you lived here. You would be permitted to have one car, but only one car because of the limited space. And the apartments are very small, so we don't think that they would, you could live in them if you had a family type of thing. That's also important for the analysis for your site plan review because we don't believe there will be negative impact on the town's infrastructure. We don't believe there'll be any impact on the school system. We think when the building's renovated, it will be much safer than it is now. There was a gas explosion, nothing huge, but there was a gas explosion in the early 2000s, and the windows had to be replaced. It's just kind of a sign that there, not everything is right with this building, and at this point, it has to be renovated if it's going to continue to be used. We visited with, as I said, we've been to the Historical Commission, we've, we've met once with the Board of Appeals. We invited interested neighbors, members of the Planning Board and Select Board, if they were available, to stop by last week and view the facility. And we did have not a huge number of people, but we did have visitors, including neighbors. And, you know, we remain, the Falcones are available by appointment to do that for anybody who wants to see the inside. It's interesting to see what's there because part of the renovation effort would be to preserve what you can of the historic appearance. And Steve's going to talk about that a little bit. So if you are willing, I think I'd start with site plan description and have Jeff Hassett explain that. The site plan's up there in the board. And you, now, do we have larger copies of the site plan?
We have one on the board and we passed two around as well as smaller.
Okay. So you have some copies that you can look at, and you'll go through all the details.
All right, great. Thank you, Marion. Jeff Hassett, civil engineer with Morse Engineering. I'll go over the existing conditions first. The property's about 19,000 square feet in size, and that includes the right-of-way that, that was obtained through land court. And as Marion noted and you're aware, it's currently developed as a historic building. The portion of the building that's historic and is going to remain is shaded in on this plan. And the apartment, the, at the rear of the building that's being removed, actually is not shown on this plan anymore. We've removed that just to show less clutter on the plan and make it more clear. It is on record on the original filing. And as far as parking currently on the property, Pleasant Street is on the left-hand side of the page, and when you come onto the property, the access drive is on the left side of the building. It's paved about halfway up the building, and then there's a gravel, gravel area behind the building. There's really limited existing parking. Historically, people have parked on the street adjacent to the building. You might be able to fit two, maybe three vehicles, and then in the small gravel area at the rear, maybe another two. So onsite, you're really looking at maybe four to six spaces. They're not, they're not striped, they're not defined in any way. Also, at the rear of the building here is the ruins of a building, there's a foundation remains. So the proposed site work, the proposed work is primarily expanding the parking on the property. The main change in use will be the middle floor, going from manufacturing being the bakery to residential. At manufacturing, that would have required 11 parking spaces. The apartments require one per, one space per bedroom, which reduces it to six. But there is, there is a need for parking here, so we're really trying to maximize it and fit as many spaces as we can onsite. We're able to get 18 parking spaces. For drainage, there's currently no, no drainage on the property. Runoff flows from the rear of the property downhill to Pleasant Street, and then it's captured within the drainage system in Pleasant Street. That's how it's historically always existed. I'm not aware of any issues with that. But we are going to put some leach and catch basins on the site to capture the runoff and infiltrate some of the runoff. As far as lighting, we do need to light the parking lot for safety, but we're trying to minimize how much we light it out of concern for the abutters. At the rear, the rear area, which is kind of the employee parking area, we're putting two light posts. They're, they're 12 feet tall with down-facing lights. The only other lighting will be mounted to the building, and again, down-facing. We're also looking to create privacy. We're specking a stockade fence around the entire perimeter of the property with a lattice above it, and then also trees, arborvitae, about every 10 feet on center, and tight spacing along the patio area, which is, the patio was proposed right here. We're also specking a bike rack at the front. And the utility upgrades include replacing the overhead wires with underground from the utility fall of the front of the property, and also adding a new water service for the sprinklers. And that's really a summary of the site work. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we'll go through your presentation. We'll see if we have questions, we'll see if comments, and then we'll have further discussion, okay?
Yeah.
So Steve, why don't you go ahead next?
Okay.
I just want to be clear, though, you mentioned, I think you mentioned stacker parking. Just want to be clear that the term is not referring to something that we've looked at as called stacker parking for Milton Marketplace, which is actually mechanized, and it's, it's going very, you're talking about tandem, which is on the ground. One car blocks the other end, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to be clear about that. Okay.
Okay.
I know, when I first saw the text on it, too, but...
I don't know how we started. We just started calling it stacked, and I can't seem to forget to call it stacked.
Knocked off my first question.
And I know that came up at the Board of Appeal, and I saw it on the tape, so I thought I'd just get that cleared out of the way. All right, Steve, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm going to use the laser this time. But here, here's the existing entrances in the same...
Steve, one, do you mind, one second.
Excuse me.
Do you have that you can put up here?
I'm getting it.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's use that. So, if the audience could see it better, I think.
Do you want me to refer to that, or that? What do you want me to do?
I think when he gets it up here, if you don't mind referring to this, so everybody can see it.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. I just need the entrance.
Does it reach?
Okay. Can I use this?
Yeah.
Great. Okay, so that's the existing entrance on Pleasant Street. And this really hasn't changed much from the existing layout. It's, it, you know, there's an entry area and...
Steve, one second. Can everybody in the back hear him?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. All right, go ahead.
The, the bakery display and the kitchen is presently in the rear. This, what we're showing here is just basically a generic layout for a would-be tenant and that would take over the space. What we have done, though, in this, in this prop, in this drawing that we've added is the outdoor café for the, for this, for this piece, and also restrooms. There's a, there's a men's room, handicap restroom there and there, men's and women's. And also, we've carved out a space in the back, a separate space for Stephanie's, who is presently on the second floor. So in the corner here, on the side of the building, so that's the entrance for the, the café. And then on the side, right there, is the entrance for the, the tenants of the apartments and also the, the office space. And there's a new elevator in the corner, right there, that would service all, all three floors, and a new stair that would also service the floors in egress for each floor, and additional egress in the back in this existing structure that will take over for a stair tower, if you want to call it a tower. But we're, we're going to use that to access all three floors for the legal means of egress. And deliveries would come through here for the, for the, for the bakery. And I don't know if Jeff wanted to talk about event, how we're going to do the, the deliveries, but I know there was some discussion about it. It, but it works, everything comes through the side here. And there's, there's, there's an existing handicap ramp that would stay in the front that would also service the entrance for the, for the café and for the, for the exterior seating area. Okay, we can go to the second. Great, thank you. This would be, right, right, I'm sorry. This is the Pleasant Street elevation right here. And then there's the, that's the common elevator. So there's an elevator lobby, and then this would service the lobby, the elevator and just also the stair. That's the continuation of the stair, and that's the continuation of the stair in the, in the side of the building that would, that would, that would provide egress. So there are, there are six apartments here. There are three, there are three studio apartments and three one-bedroom apartments. And the apartments range from 240 feet to the smallest, and this one over here, I believe, is 600 feet. They're all one-bedroom apartments, they're fully appliance kitchens, and also have washer and dryers, storage, and living area, you know, sleeping areas, and they're very well, they're, they have great amenities for, you know, a small apartment. They're very comfortable. And also, we have a space here for the, a community room, we're calling it a community room, for the tenants, and bicycle storage right here. So there, it's, this one here, we were able to get a small balcony in the corner that's presently a stair that, that, that used to be the, I believe it was the old entrance, it was the entrance to the, to cook, the bakery. So that worked out really well. So, so we're retaining all of the windows, we're keeping all of the windows in the building, we're not moving any windows, with the exception of, there's, there's a window right there, and I, I'm sorry to shake it so much, but this is such a long distance. It's very, long holidays. But the, we're, we're removing that window there because it's very, I mean, it's about right where that dot is right now, that's how close it is to the neighbor. So I have, I have another plan with me that shows that window removed, so that, that window is not, you know, imposing upon the, the neighbor. So we did make that change. And this right here is the car, this car right here is an exit that goes out to the, the parking that, at one point, at the original, the original building was right here, the original piece that we're, we're demolishing would be right there, and that's where we're picking up the parking spaces. So this goes straight out to those, those parking spaces. Next one? Yeah, next one, sure.
You might want to say, there's your balcony over here.
Okay, well, while we're there, we might as well talk about it. Right, that's right there. So this is the, this is the... This is the proposed exterior café. So we have some columns there with a trellis and wrought iron fencing, and that fencing would continue across the front, and then it would tie into this new side entrance. And that, where you see that canopy there, that would be the, the side entrance for the tenants and for the, the apartments and for the, and for the office space above. So all of these windows are exactly where they are right now. Nothing's changed. The awnings will be added, I mean, if they're, they're there now, but, so the awnings would stay the same, the front windows would be the same. Everything is, you know, a lot of that work has already been done, as you can see, when you've, you've been by the site. And that's the existing, this, this is the existing, that's the piece on the side that we're using for the, the new stair, the egress stair right there. So that's existing. All we're doing is adding a roof, small roof on it to accommodate the third-floor stair. But, but that, that just piece is existing, that's that, the apartment that's, that's adjacent to the, to the abutter right here, was, right there, it's not shown. So that would be the, that's all, that, the only, the only new piece on the building on the front would be this, this, this trellis, the, the café. Top floor, the existing office space. So here's a continuation of the new stair. And there's a continuation of the second means of egress from that, that piece that's on the side of the building and the continuation of the elevator. Presently, there's only one means of egress out of that building. So this would add the legal means of egress for the, for the second means of egress, rather. And then also, we're adding a, a, two bathrooms, two handicap bathrooms for that space. Presently, right there in that line of columns, there's, there's a petition that we're removing, and there's a petition about right there, at that point, we're just going to remove it to accommodate additional space for the tenant that's presently using the space. And that's pretty much it. That's what we're doing with the, the building. If you have any questions or...
Okay. If there's any questions about what was... Okay. For members that have questions about what was presented, yes, Denny?
Hi, it's more for the board. Do you remember the one-bedroom apartment above the supermarket? Special permit got denied by the Attorney General's Office because it was seen as discrimination if you said not...
Oh, one and a half bedrooms. Oh, this is for the Parkway, PUD. Right.
Because we only had one bedroom, so...
No, it was because we did not allow anything larger than a one-bedroom. Where somebody can propose whatever they like under the zoning, but the Attorney General there said, "You can't limit it in your zoning how many bedrooms somebody could propose."
Okay, so we're not doing zoning here.
We're not doing zoning here. Right. Okay. Brian? I'm sorry, Denny, do you have another question?
I was wondering if there was a way to have more of a buffer along the abutter line that you guys considered.
Is there a particular, which, abutter line, Denny? Is there a particular...
The ones that they're asking for a waiver on, have they considered, you know, what's, why?
So along the north of the property line where we're expanding the parking lot, there actually was a previous plan that was approved by the zoning board to expand the parking right up to the property line, although it was never constructed. The reason we've extended, proposed this depth is that it allowed parallel spaces along the building and then room for two travel lanes going up and down. So a typical, a typical travel lane for two-way traffic is 20 feet and that's what we have.
Okay. And where else are you asking for a waiver on buffer?
And then at the rear, in the wooded, the area that's currently wooded, we're looking to put the parking lot as closest to and a half feet of the property line. However, the budding areas in that area are not enough developed and because the property is only 33 feet wide in that area, we really need to in order to utilize the area for anything.
The, I'd add to that, we're providing eight rather than 10 feet of buffer space. The reason it's 10 feet is the zoning bylaw requires that the setback be as it would be in a residential zone, although originally I thought that meant accessory buildings. We later realized it means, after talking to the building commissioner about it, it's 10 feet because this is a residency zone and it's the main residential setback that he interprets that to apply to. So that's fine. We did the best we could, but we really can only do eight feet and still have proper travel lanes in the driveway. That's an existing condition since 1895. The travel lane has always been there. What happened in, not 1895, in 1995, the Board of Appeals and the applicant agreed to plant evergreen trees all along that buffer and they're still there. They're quite big, actually. So one of the brothers who lives in that property came to the Board of Appeals hearings and his only request was he thought he might prefer an eight-foot rather than a six-foot fence. I think right now, the fence is actually seven feet. So it's, you know, we agreed that we would do an eight-foot fence if that's what he wanted. It's not a big difference. He didn't want more trees. He wasn't asking for a wider buffer on that side, but he thought he might like a little bit higher fence. And then the same buffer exists on the other side around the back of the parking lot, except at the rear, at the end, because at the end, to make those parks spaces, you have to put them right up against the corner. But there's nothing in back there. The house, the two houses are much closer to the front of the lot. This, on this side, the back of the lot is the backyard and we've had a lot of discussion with that neighbor and about everything, about what's happening in the back. And so, to my knowledge, they're satisfied with the evergreen buffer and the fence. They'd actually have said to us that they'd like some lighting because it's very dark in their backyard and they'd like some, basically it would give them some security as well. So right now, we're proposing lighting and we're not proposing that it be motion sensor lighting. We're proposing that it stay on, but that it be dark sky compliant as minimal as possible, but that it be on during the night. And then on the edge of the building there, where they were so close, the building's originally, Bent's encroached on the neighboring property, but the properties were owned together. So they eventually conveyed a tiny irregular piece of land in order to correct that encroachment. But they are still among the closest, other than commercial districts, buildings that you would ever see. So Bent's is built up almost next to the adjacent house because the adjacent house used to be the residence for the owner of Bent's. And so for that reason, the architect is proposing to remove the two windows on that side so that you don't have a privacy issue. If you have an apartment there, you're not going to have people looking out into the adjacent house. And I suppose it works the other way, too. We discussed that with the resident from that side when we were doing these site tours and we suggested that we could take the windows out. He didn't actually say he definitely wanted them taken out, but we're proposing to take them out. Certainly, we could leave them in if he changed his mind and said he'd rather have them stay. But that issue has been discussed. You can't put any, you can't put trees between the two houses. There's not enough room or two structures. So that's the existing condition and this is the best we're able to suggest. On the side where the, there's an eating area in the front of the building right now, what we're proposing is that those seats moved, be moved around the corner. So that's what we're calling the patio. And we are proposing installing a thick evergreen, I mean, arborvitae and fencing there so that it will be screened and visually separated from the neighboring property.
I'll think there were some questions for after?
Sure. Brian?
I've got a bunch of stuff I want to put out there because I actually want to hear, I want to have the public have an opportunity to respond to some of it if it's necessary or they find they need to do so. Generally speaking, I think this is a really interesting plan, an interesting idea. It checks off a lot of boxes on our master plan. It incorporates mixed use, brings in a diverse housing stock. So I'm really intrigued by the plan and happy to see some new ideas for Bent's. Couple of quick questions on the, or quick comments, not questions, on the internal layout, which I'm not going to spend any more time on, I 'll just give these two comments. One is, from a parking standpoint and a infrastructure impact standpoint, I know I would prefer not to see any bathtubs, to have a design, designed towards no children environment. I know that's something that's used in the industry quite a bit for residential, to encourage a non-children population. I think the one-bedroom's...
You know, old people like bathtubs.
Just giving you some feedback.
Like old people like me.
The other comment I have, you know, I'm somewhat familiar with micro units and they certainly qualify. The smallest unit, which is the studio, I think my, the one comment I have, and I'd love to see if there's anything you can do about this, and you may have already looked at it, but the one studio is literally as far from the community room as it can be. And I think in these micro environments, some of the idea is to have smaller units that are communal gathering. And probably the unit that needs it the most is the furthest from it and actually separated from it by the interior stair corridor. So, don't know if there's anything you can do about that, but certainly from a design standpoint, I wanted to call that to your attention.
That's taken.
I don't know if John Thompson has reviewed this plan. I have two comments for him.
I don't know. Bill, has he reviewed the plan?
He hasn't reviewed this plan.
Okay.
As John looks at it, I have two things for him to look at. One is, do the changes proposed to the drive surface increase any of the water going out? You know, they're putting in catch basins. I think that's great, but where are we netting for sheet flow out to the street?
I actually did talk, speak to John about that. He hasn't seen the plan per se, but I asked him if drainage would be required on this property. And he, what he told me is that there really isn't a requirement to do so, but if stormwater runoff is a concern of the board, they might, you might ask him to review it.
Yeah.
So I haven't submitted drainage calculations, but if that's something you would like, I can do so.
I think with the, all of the attention being paid to stormwater impacts in the community right now, with residents being asked to pay for it, I think we definitely should be thinking about it with the board.
Sure.
The other piece is, I know that there's always been a lot of concern with the Pleasant Street connection here and the traffic going through there and the speed at which the cars go through. So, and with the limited parking, you do have people parking on the street here. It would be interesting to hear if the applicant is willing to do some striping out here to make those spaces more defined. And also, if there may be an opportunity for John Thompson to look at changing the radius of this curve to slow the cars coming in.
It's a great idea.
You know, make this more of a 60, 70-degree turn as opposed to a 45.
It's an exit ramp.
It's an exit ramp. So you've got people, you've got people parking here. I think the business relies on those striped spaces. It would be great to see if we can slow those cars down, maybe even put in a crosswalk or pedestrian crossing sign or something like that.
You just need to change the radius of that curve on the right. That's all you need to do.
We did, we did ask John Thompson about the striping right in the beginning.
Yep.
He thought it was a good idea. He would be cooperative and we would be able to do that. But we, I haven't discussed the other, but we have amongst ourselves.
Yep. And a pedestrian crossing sign would also be good here.
Back when the halls had the restaurant, they had gone to the zoning board of appeals and they had agreed to put striping in the street for parking. The on-ramp way that Pleasant Street is now has been slowed down. When they redid 28, they actually did bring that sidewalk way out in order to slow that traffic down. If you think it's bad now, you shouldn't have seen it before.
I'm just commenting that maybe it could be made better.
It could be more.
So maybe it could be made more.
It could have gone a little bit more.
I think you said, I think I heard you say the indoor seating would only be used if the outdoor seating wasn't used? So it's 16 seats?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I would want, I think we would want to have that as a condition. The, talked about the striping, we talked about the radius, stormwater, got it. Will the residential spaces be reserved or is this just shared? Is another question I have. I would like to...
I'm interested in your comments from the planning board on the concept as to whether it's better one way or the other.
Well, my concern is that if the residential spaces are reserved, that means you really, between the office spaces and the residential spaces, you really only have two, maybe three or four retail spaces available. And if the retail spaces are known to be back there, you're going to have people turning in here and getting back there and not having any available spaces and then having to make a three-point turn to get back out. So I'd be interested in knowing how many spaces are going to be available and figuring out a mechanism to potentially make sure that there's enough back there to at least try to accommodate. Maybe the back spaces are for pickup, I don't know, but I think it's something you need to think about because there's not a lot of room for turning here. And bringing in people that aren't familiar with the lot, only to have to make the three-point turn is tough. I do know that two of the spaces are going to be in front of the loading area. I don't think that's necessarily a problem, except that I think the plan would need to be subject to some limited, limited loading hours to make sure that those spaces are free.
Okay.
Otherwise, the truck's going to block the roadway. I'd like to see a photometric plan of the lighting. I think we've been requiring that pretty regularly, photometric.
Okay, we can get your depth.
Just to see where the lighting goes.
For tonight, but...
Yep, but depth, we'd want to just see that. And then I do think it would be appropriate to change the word stacked to tandem, just to use the appropriate language and not imply that we might be doing any mechanicals here. I think my last comment, just making sure it is my last comment. I think my last comment is just the stacked spaces, there's a diagonal angled space right in front of the shared parking that, I'm just, I want to understand how this parking is going to work because as I see it, you're going to need to move two to three cars to get those two blocked cars out.
Right. That last angled space would have to be an employee space also.
That last angled space is going to have to be an employee space. And at that point, I wonder if really, that whole back area, all three of the angles and the stacks should all be employee to keep, or at least reserved for a residential apartment to make sure that those are, people that are parking, they'll understand what's going on and that they may need to move their vehicle.
Yeah, the intent was that would be employee parking.
Got it. So I think, I'd want to see all of those labeled employee spaces.
Okay.
Okay. April?
My only question was about that last point. How did you get in?
I'm sorry, April. Okay.
Just a quick, where is the street parking, lawn street parking that we're talking about defining?
It's on the other side of Pleasant Street, away from the building.
It's not, it's not straight.
Where on here?
It's not, it's not marked right now, but that's where people park.
Oh, okay. All right. I figured that.
That's currently where they park and it's not marked.
They should be parking on the other side, actually.
Yeah, people park on both sides.
My concern was back, the same as what I...
I guess, I guess it's an engineering question and one that we would want to consult with the engineering department on.
I'd like to see it reflected on here after consultation with John.
Okay.
So, yeah, so my, I mean, where I was getting at is this whole, that whole section of parking, I don't, I don't see, how would any of that be retail? And if it's not, would you just turn that whole thing into employee and residential parking, apartment parking so that there is no retail back there parking? You know what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying. I think it's something that we wanted to get feedback from you on.
If one spot, I'm just saying, like, I guess, we'd need to like call it out because if only one or two spaces is retail, to Brian's point, you're calling, you're bringing people in to hopefully get one of those spots. I mean, in reality, there is an issue back here, so those one or two spots probably aren't retail. So why even bring people in there to begin with?
The reality is that today, if the café were operating, you would see people parked on the street. It seems to be human nature.
Right.
It's because it's a relatively short-term use. People come in, order their sandwiches. They might sit and eat lunch, but they don't stay for hours. And they park on the street and the cars come and go. But it's true, the street parking isn't marked and it should be, you know, it can be better laid out.
I mean, if there's stripes and there are cars parked on Pleasant Street, even without a radius adjustment, people will go slower.
Right.
Because right now, they have 40 feet.
Right.
Coming off of that and never hit their brakes until they get almost to go Kathleen Lane.
Put a crosswalk, put lighting, yes.
I drive this almost every day and it's a bullet. So anything you can do to create a visual impact here, that there's going to be a car here, that there's striping, that there's pedestrians, give the radius turn, I think all of those things as part of this project would be a huge benefit and really help a lot in recognizing the, you know, waivers that we have to grant here.
Yeah, so more detail on the parking and also agree with the lighting to see what that's going to look like back here.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I mean, from my recollection, I haven't been over here in a while, but the sandwich shop always used, utilized on-street parking. Is that correct? On both sides of the street? I mean, how many cars can you get in there? 10?
There's not striped. No.
Yeah.
Five or six.
On each side?
Not on both. Yeah, but you shouldn't be parking on both sides. It's only 40 feet wide.
That's what everybody's always done, as long as it's lived there.
It's only 40 feet wide, so you should really...
The purpose of striping would be to try to direct the parking. We also want to keep it out of driveways.
Right.
You know, nothing's operating right now, but we would, we would think that at times, people, there's a, there's a house across the street, that somebody might park halfway in front of that park, that driveway access, which would certainly be very annoying to those residents. They're not currently complaining about it because there's no use of the building right now. But we've anticipated that. That's one reason we talked to the town engineer about striping. But yeah, well, we don't know exactly how many spaces are, would be recommended for use out there. Certainly, the use in, historically, has been people just park anywhere they can find a spot. And I think striping would help, but we can get recommendations from engineering about how best to do striping and whether there's anything else that can be done to the corner at the intersection to try to change the angle or slow it. It's, that's something we have to talk to the town about doing with us, so...
I mean, I think it would be helpful for us to know how many cars can be parked on street.
Yeah, that's what I was about to ask.
Yeah, we can certainly calculate that, working with the town engineer.
I'm sorry, one more comment from me. As you look at where people are parking, if you do reserve spaces for residents, I think the parallel spaces would be appropriate to do that with. They're up against the residential entrance, they're up against the loading area, they're the more difficult spaces, they're probably going to be used more during off-hours, so I think those are better.
So those are the ones along the parking?
Right along the side of the building.
Along the driveway?
Right.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
How many are there? Is that just two?
There's just two.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah. But remember, well, in the back of the building, there's a handicapped space and then there are several parking spaces near the back of the building, so depending on how...
There's one here. There's one spot here. There's two. There's the second spot here.
The parking on Pleasant Street is on this side.
That's one. That's two.
It would be good to have a handicap access spot.
Near the ramp?
Near the ramp and near the entrance. So it's closest to the patio and feeding the side, right?
Can you do that at street parking?
A street, a street marked space that was marked handicapped.
Yeah.
We'll have to check the slope to the ramp and all, and that, but we'll look into it.
We did originally have a handicapped space headed in sp- We did, did originally have a handicapped space, head-in space in front of the building, but that was definitely not, did not fit.
I prefer the ADA's off the street because now you've got people...
Especially if people are coming around the corner very fast and you have somebody getting out of a car with assistance, it could be trouble.
I think it's, you know, this way you're providing them the appropriate van lift area. You're giving them an accessible access point to get to the restaurant.
That's safer.
All in one level, there's...
There's no, there, there's no space in here for a parking, right?
There's a slope.
Oh, there's a slope.
There's a slope. I'm sorry, which part are you pointing at, Rich?
Between the entrance and the entrance to the side.
Those, there were spots there that...
That's on, that's the street.
You don't want people backing onto it.
No.
The problem is getting in and out of the front spaces, if you were to put them parallel to the building, you have to back out into traffic. You can go forward into traffic.
Yeah, that's not a good spot to back out into.
Let's just say the building commissioner didn't say, "We couldn't do it," but, you know, everybody's saying, you know, it's not so good to be backing into traffic. That's been the problem historically.
The first floor exit out the rear of the building that goes directly to parking, that's at grade.
Yes.
So, I mean, that actually does make sense from a handicap access point, especially if the elevator is right there.
And the elevator is right there.
You have to go through the building.
Yep, not on that. Oh, today? Today.
They have to go to the elevator.
They go through the...
Oh, so they...
There's no, there's no ground floor entrance. It would be the first floor in the back. So, you go through the, pass the apartments to the elevator and then down. That's how you get in. So, it is, it is quite accessible for a wheelchair.
That's better. Thank you.
Yeah, so it would be right in here.
Right, and then they, and then to get to the cafe, they just, they would just go down, one floor in the elevator. Okay, so I have a couple of general comments. I have a number of details that I want to go over later after we hear from folks in the audience. But I did take advantage of the opportunity to go visit the property and was glad that I did because it's a, it's a wonderful building. I've only seen it before from going in the front door and getting a sandwich or cookies to take out. But the amount of work as an architect, and I walk through and I can see how much work they've already done and how much work it will take to restore this building and to make it economically viable. I applaud you for this plan because, you know, you could see where you would need to do much more building here to make this work. That you can make this work with this building program, I think, is really incredible. And, you know, to see this building get restored and have it be an asset to the community again, I think, is remarkable. So, first I want to say that. I, I think there's a lot of technical challenges still to be solved. Building code, lots of building code issues to work through. Those windows are one of them. You started to address that. And the, just the entrances at the street level, the grades, how the, how you're getting people from one place to another, I think still needs more work and I will talk about that a little bit more. But on the, I think the combination of uses is really interesting and I find it very interesting that you've heard from employers in town that their employees may want to live here, that they could walk to Milton Hospital from here, that, that's at least what I was told at one, at the, at the site walk, that you could get to Milton Academy pretty quickly also and that you can meet a need. So, if you have someone who's teaching at Milton Academy, you know, maybe they are one person. If you have someone who's working a night shift at the hospital and doesn't want to have to, maybe they take public transit and, you know, to get someplace of public transit in the night shift at a hospital could be a challenge. So, I think to meet that kind of demographic could be very interesting. And that's on the bus line, I think, is also, allows for flexibility for someone who might not be driving to their job. When I was starting out in my career, I had to take public transit to where I worked. There's, I couldn't afford $300 a month for a parking space near where I worked. So, there might be people who find it easy to get to Ashmont to get to their job. So, I, I like the idea of the, of the apartments. The 246 square foot one, I do question. I went back and looked through because in our work, we're looking at micro-units for some of our clients. Boston spent a lot of time researching micro-units. I think they got it down to 345 square feet that they feel is a good studio size. So, I think you've got plenty of square footage, though, to make it all, to keep six units and just shift it around a little bit to get that one unit a little bit bigger.
It's a big hotel room.
Yeah. Yeah. So, um...
Okay.
So, that, I think, my other detailed comments, I'll wait until after we hear from folks. So, if you don't mind, we'll just make a little room here and see if anybody wants to come forward with any comments. Yes, please come forward and we would like you to give us your name and address. Okay?
Together.
Sure, absolutely.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jerry Fowler.
I'm Sarah Fowler.
Live at 672 Randolph Ave, the...
We're the butters that are very, very close.
Okay.
Oh, which?
The ones that are the closest.
This is our house.
That little corner?
No, it says number 672.
Oh, awesome, thanks.
Yeah. So, we wrote a letter, which I'd love to just kind of pass around to you guys so you can have it. But first off, I mean, Marion talked a little bit about the context, but it's really important, I think, that we convey how unusually close the properties are. So, not only is it about four feet from our building to the corner of Ben's factory, but our property line actually goes all the way right to the foundation in that area as well. So, and our backyard is all of this area right here. This is all our backyard. Where the current, you know, a big portion of it is where the current apartment is. So, we bought our house about three years ago. We have three children. We have six-year-old twins and a two-year-old. And we, we looked, we had been renters, apartment, living in apartments in Jamaica Plain and Dorchester for years. And we, you know, felt like we needed a little more space as our kids were getting older and we loved Milton for the schools and how close it was to both of our respective jobs and everything else. And when we found this house, after a very long search, we fell in love with the charm and the story and we actually, you know, received a bunch of photographs of the original Bent's family standing, you know, standing in front of their house and stories about who was born in the upstairs bedrooms and all of that, that kind of thing. And we know at one point, there was actually a hallway connecting the two buildings, so they could just go in between. So, there's a really close relationship between the two properties, which we really appreciate and value and is part of what drew us to the house. We loved the cafe next door. We were fine living next to a cafe. We appreciated that it had hours that didn't extend past about 3:00 P.M. We didn't mind the office space upstairs and we actually had our real estate agent at the time do some research into what the building's zoned for because we were a little concerned about, you know, the direction it might go in the future. And, you know, he assured us that it wasn't zoned beyond that one apartment that existed at the time, which, when that apartment was built, I believe it was supposed to be an owner-occupied situation, which is how it originally got the special permit. So, um, giving you that context kind of about us, we have, we have some major reservations about this plan. The two primary ones that we have are about how close these six apartments are going to be. And although they're small, it is five times the households that currently exist over there. So, just the level of activity and noise, you know, it's, there's only one parking spot per apartment, but, you know, like any other household, these people are going to have family that are coming to visit. They're going to have friends that are coming to visit. They're going to be out and about and coming home when they come home and all of those sorts of things. So, it's going to create a 24/7 activity situation for us, which we have not had there other than that one apartment, which has been, you know, pretty quiet. So, um, so that's one. The other main issue that we have has to do with the parking and the variance that they're requesting to decrease the setback. You know, that's our, that's our yard where our little kids play and obviously, you know, people are going to be parking back there. It's also the only outdoor space on the lot for all of those six households. So, if people smoke, they're going to go in the parking lot to do that, you know, and, and there's going to be a fence, sure, but it's still going to be, there's still going to be noise and light and smells and sounds and all this sort of stuff that's going to come in the backyard and we're playing with our kids. So, we're concerned about that and lessening the setback, even just by a couple of feet, certainly still affects us. We want to have as much setback as possible between the parking lot and where, and the yard that we're enjoying. So, those are the two main things and I, you know, I outlined this better in our letter, but which you guys can obviously keep and look at. But we have other concerns as well. I mean, I think the idea of having outdoor space and indoor space, but only having the indoor space available at certain times is going to be difficult to enforce. And so, I think what's going to happen is between the apartments and the cafe, we'd have a lot of people. This is going to be a very congested area. Already when the cafe was open, it was very congested. We frequently had people parking along our, the front part of our lawn. They didn't want to turn right into Pleasant, Pleasant Street, you know, that was already happening. Or Pleasant Street was just, both sides were packed with cars and they just thought, "There's no parking there." You know, so I think our, and that was already when the cafe, you know, and its limited space, you know, was like that. So, you know, we, we have nothing personal against Mr. Falcone. He's been good about communicating with us, but we just...
The renovations he's done to the exterior are impeccable.
Yeah, we're happy with, yeah.
The place looks amazing.
So, um, just a question for you in terms of, like, use and activity. So, if the second floor were continued as a use, as a bakery or some other commercial use, do you see that as less impactful for you than having residents on that floor?
Yeah, because it's not 24/7.
Absolutely. I mean, that, those businesses would have hours.
Yeah.
And the residents, what makes it 24/7 about a residence? Like, you, you live in a residence, right? Does that make you 24/7? I'm just, why an apartment would be 24/7 versus a single family?
I think, oh, I don't, I think we, we, we live there, so we're, there's 24/7 activity at our house as well.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, just people may come home late, slam a door, may get into, have a conversation outside, you know. You know, with six residences, you're, you're, there's five times the amount of activity that there currently is.
Just the potential is alarming.
So, it's really more the, the number of units then?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just with that one unit, we encountered problems in our backyard.
What kind of problems do you encounter in your backyard?
Well, when there was, when it was occupied with, with one, it was, people would be outside smoking. They'd be outside listening to music, having loud conversations. That's with one. Now, that parking lot's going to be bigger with more people.
So, would, they're proposing a fence. I think I had heard it was six feet or eight feet along the property line. What's your thought about whether that would provide a protection from, you know, like, you know, in terms of people using your backyard in comfort?
Yeah. I think the fence, I mean, the fence is a start for sure, but I think it's also just unrealistic to think that that is truly going to have, have there be no impact, you know.
So, one thing I was wondering in looking at the plan, if, if the fence were moved inward to their property and plantings were put on your side of the fence, would that make a difference to you, do you think, in terms of more buffer?
Well, then they're still asking for eight feet. So, there's a, there's a border there, but it's, it's, it's a lot closer than it should be.
So, you know, it's interesting, like, a driveway could go closer than 10 feet in our residency districts, in fact, you know. So, it's interesting. I find that Mr. Prandac has, has said that 10 feet is what's the requirement here because it, it is a little bit of a different situation than you might have. I mean, many in our residential districts, the paving goes up to the property line for some driveways. But I, I understand your concern about buffer here, but do you, do you think that, I'm, I'm just trying to understand if, if one...
I think too, in these tiny apartments, you know, I understand completely and, you know, this idea in an urban area where you have loads of resources right outside your door and you don't need to spend a whole lot of time, but, you know, that's not this area, per se. And so, the only outdoor space is that parking lot, so it's not just going to be cars, you know. And we found that even with the...
Just with one.
The one apartment, that families have their kids play outside in that parking lot, you know. It's, that's kind of what it's...
We were literally, there's like a, a six, five-foot, six-foot tall fence there right now. We're literally on the other side of the fence from people who are renting the, the unit.
And, 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 you know, to be fair, it's not been that big of a...
No, no, but we're talking the potential of that.
The, the fear, you know, that we have is that, you know, as small as they are, it's still five times the increase in households.
Quick question, just for, for my, because I'm, I got confused about when you, we're all, what you're talking about, are you talking about this area where the patio is or are you talking about the back?
Talking about the back area.
This back area, so you're not?
That's up at the front.
When you were talking about the smoking and the thing, like, the noise.
Yeah, we're talking about the back.
You're talking about back here?
Yeah, and that, that abuts our property as well, the patio, but the patio isn't an issue. I mean, our kids aren't hanging out up front.
Okay.
It's Randolph Ave, it's Pleasant Street. Like they said, it's a bad intersection. We're not, we don't hang out up front.
And again, that has hours that we're used to and fine with, you know.
Yeah, okay. Well, because my other question was, is that going to be used by their residents after hours? But if that's not the issue you're talking about here, then that's not, that's a moot point.
Which is very close and the addition of, you know, potentially five more families in the smaller, in the same area where there's only been one.
Or even just individuals, you know, they're all bringing their own.
Yeah, I think the idea of the microunit is that they're too small for families, but, you know, so you would be looking at the likelihood of children in a 345 square foot unit might be tough, but...
Yeah, it's not very realistic, but it's a lot more people.
Yeah, it's definitely more people.
Look, at the same proximity.
Danny, you wanted to ask a question? I'm just curious. So, it's not really enforceable. So, you rent it, you, they, whoever manages the property would rent it to an individual. But if that individual decided, "Well, I'd like to have my boyfriend over all the time," or girlfriend all the time, or someone gets pregnant, I, I mean, you can't discriminate. You can't...
You can't discriminate, no.
No, but you can tell them they can't park there and you can tow their car and...
Yeah, you can limit it to one.
You can limit it to that, okay.
But you're right, it's by design.
Yeah, and we, you know, we rent it. It's, it's very hard to mitigate those sorts of issues with renters.
So, the other thing, just about the parking on the street, and you may already be aware of this, but there's no overnight parking on the street, so that, that what would get striped on the street would have to be enforced by the town, which...
We've gotten a ticket there before.
But just again, so if you're thinking about people having more cars than what they're allowed, they really, unless, you know, it would be up to management to tow those cars and, you know, they'd have to post the signs that saying, "If you park illegally, you would be towed." But on the street, it would be more of a public, you know, a town enforcement. But that's one of the ways, parking is one of the ways to control how many people can actually be there. Yes, Rich?
So, one, maybe a suggestion would be for the developer to look at if there, because I know we're going to look at parking. So, if there is theoretically enough parking on Pleasant Street and this back could be turned into residence and employee, maybe what you're doing is making the employee section the part that abuts that fence. That way, you're keeping, so imagine the employees are going to just, I mean, those ones are staying there put. You're not going to have the in and out.
Yeah, so my understanding was that the spaces that are here, which is, this is your backyard here, right? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The whole section, right?
The whole section, all the way up.
This is all you, right? But as Rich said, if this is resident and this is employee, then nobody would be parked here at night, right? So, maybe there could be some kind of gate that would...
Reconfigure it at least.
Would not allow parking after business hours, you know, back here and no weekend. I mean, there's weekend hours for the business, but again, when the business is closed, that the, the, the commercial parking is also closed. And then that, I think, would help, could help alleviate some of your concerns about what happens in, in that parking area.
Yeah, a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean...
They're still parking very close to our house, you know, the part that's closer to our house and...
Yeah, and the, the six apartments are still there.
The other question I would have for the, for the board is, is there anything we can do about the smoking and smoking sections and not influencing that in any way? Because, I mean, I agree, that's a...
You can't, I don't know if you can discriminate on smoking for residents, but I think you can have a designated smoking area for employees. That, there's a, I don't know, there's a law around that and I don't know.
You can have a designated smoking area for residents as well. That would be a requirement of them to have in their building bylaws.
Enact it. I mean, you could have that way on the opposite side of the property.
I mean, you probably have the, certainly a condo association has the right to designate a building non-smoking.
Right. Well, I just don't know. I didn't know if there was a law on rentals, though.
It comes down to enforcement again, though.
Because is that discriminatory on rentals?
Exactly. It just comes down to enforcement.
It's a good question, though.
It's going to enforce that at Saturday night at 10:30 at night, you know.
Yeah.
Just to be clear, this building isn't zoned for residential, is it?
No, it, this is pre-existing, non-conforming, so, you know, the, the use existed prior to zoning. So, it's, it's a variance for the business uses. It's a variance for the multifamily. so it's a variance for the business uses, it's a variance for the multifamily use.
But this isn't a residency district, right?
Yes.
Yes.
So it is zoned, I guess, for residential?
Well, it's zoned for single residents.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So just one?
Yeah, yeah.
Without the other two?
Well, it's one per certain lot size, you know, and fronted size and that sort of thing.
That's why they're, all three uses are here today.
Well, it's why the uses, all the uses continue, but some of the uses are permitted under current permits, so the business uses are permitted under current permits. And presumably those would continue to be extended. The one that's really different is changing that commercial, called first or second floor, to a multifamily floor, right? And I think, I mean, part of what I understand, the reason for making it that use is that it's, the less parking space requirements for residential versus commercial, and the idea on a commercial, you may have more activity depending upon what the use is during the day, when you have a business operating there. That's my understanding. Then the other piece of it would be the economic piece, in terms of which of it allows the total financial picture to work for the renovation cost. I'm sorry, Denny?
Oh, sorry.
So, Rich, Denny, Brian?
I was just going to say, so my thought process around that questioning, and I think it is worth looking into about seeing if you can designate or stop it from smoking, is that whether it's six units or one unit, it sounds like there's a problem now, or has been a problem, and this could be an opportunity to reshift or mitigate the issue going forward, regardless of, you know, what's put in there. It could be, it could end up being better, you know, during this design, if we ask the developers to go back and reconfigure some stuff to mitigate.
Yeah. I hear what you're saying, but as, I can't remember the name of the woman who's sitting behind you, but as she said, you know, the best laid plans, you know, you can't control who comes in and what happens kind of after these things are passed, so we'd rather err on.
Right.
You know, it is, you know, with the, we call it the Airbnb, which it no longer is. I think it wasn't supposed to be used that way. But with the apartment, you know, it was, it was one household, and this is five times the chances for issues.
Okay, Denny, did you have?
Yeah, I was wondering what the standard parking requirement is.
For what?
For residential.
Per bedroom has been our standard for multifamily in some PUDs, but we're looking at when you have access to public transit, having that be one per unit. But that, but our typical, in the past, has been one per bedroom. Yes, Brian?
Just, it's, just noting the time, I think, very good comments from the abutter that probably has the most standing in this application. I would love to suggest that we invite the board, not the board, we invite the applicant to reach out to this abutter and see if there's anything that they can do to make them happy, and let the applicant try to respond to some of these concerns, because I feel like we're sort of interrogating the witness here, and I think we also have a lot more to think about.
No, I think we wanted to get sent, flush out some ideas to see if it would help, and you can definitely take those ideas or not, and talk to the Falcones, and we're just trying to see whether your concerns can be handled.
Give the applicant a chance to respond.
You know, in such that, you know, it would allow the-
Like I said, we want to see the property restored, you know, we don't mind uses of the factory that coincide with the current zoning, you know. We don't like this change.
Yeah, this is, this is not what we signed up for at all, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
What's the standard visitor parking requirement in a multifamily?
We don't think we have one.
I don't think we have one.
Because we haven't done multifamily other than on specific sites.
Probably wouldn't just be six spaces.
475 Adams, so did you have any? That night, you'd have overflowed, you used it.
No, I wasn't.
It's got business.
I'd have to look it up.
Retailing, it'd still need spaces for all that.
Was it Adams?
Oh, I'm sorry, the one we just did. I don't think we, we didn't have any.
I don't think so either.
Because there was street parking available.
There was street parking, and then there was also the day use left, and then I used to use it.
I mean, you have this, sorry, one thing, April, one second. You could, a guest could still use the on-street parking during the day, so there, I mean, if there was someone visiting, someone in the residence on the weekend, or during, anytime during the day, he couldn't park overnight. April?
So the existing parking, the existing apartment is 1,500 square feet, but I don't see the bedroom count. Does anybody know this?
Well, I just did it on here. It's one per unit, basically.
No, 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 the existing apartment.
Existing is two bedrooms plus, Marion? Yes.
The existing apartment is a two-bedroom apartment. It's 1,500 square feet. It also has enough space to, of my living room, that had a den in it.
So, it's been used as a three-bedroom.
Two plus, right. So, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to come forward and give us comments? Yes, please come forward. Give us your name and address.
That's what it says, it's 18.
Hi.
Hi.
Paul Botaglia, I live on the other side.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Is it Botaglia, B U B?
Because it's got business, it's got retail.
My brother and I both live there.
I'm sorry, the address? You said the other side?
19 Pleasant.
19 Pleasant, thank you. Go ahead.
Well, issues. The parking, we're going to echo the same thing. When we went before the, when the applicant went before the zoning board of appeals, it was stated that there would be 20 spaces, and now they're saying there's going to be 18 spaces. So it's already cut down a couple of spaces, even with this, what are we calling it now? Not stacked, but the-
Tandem.
Tandem parking. Now, at that building, there's just the office building, the third floor is being used, and today I counted five cars in the driveway, with a bakery, a caterer, and at least six cars without guests of these people that may be living in these micro apartments, is going to be parking all over the place. When the bakery was open, the deliveries were made during the day, tractor trailers would not back up that hill, that driveway. They would park right in front of the building, and then people would park everywhere else. Nobody, very few people parked in the driveway, but those that did had to back out, and even though the lot, right away, was granted to the applicant, it's not going to be, people are still going to have to back up if they're parking alongside, especially if they're parking on both sides. On the our side, by the trees and the proposed fence and the building, there's no way you can have two-way traffic. It's just not big enough. It's just not big enough. I don't like the idea of marking at all. The street, Pleasant Street, it makes it look like a parking lot, and it just takes away the character of the neighborhood. People know they're not supposed to park in front of a driveway. That hasn't been an issue, parking in front of the driveway, a driveway. I've talked to the woman that lives across the street from us, and we haven't had an issue with people blocking the driveway. Six more, six apartments is going to be, as they said, I forgot their names, but 24/7 is absolutely correct. I mean, there's going to be people, visitors, where these apartments are so small, especially in the warmer weather, maybe not so much in the winter, the hangout is going to be in the driveway, in the back parking area. That's the only place those people are going to have. It's going to be very, very noisy, and people in and out, very noisy, and the parking's going to be horrendous. Parking for visitors, where are they going to park, you know? Especially if they come during the day, when all these businesses are open. Hours of operation, I didn't hear anything about hours of operation, although they did say, the applicant said, that they want to open on Sunday. Sundays, they've never had anything going on on Sundays, and there was no talk of what the hours are going to be for the bakery. Are they going to propose breakfast, lunch, and an early dinner type thing? Are they going to be able to get a sandwich at 5:00 after work? What are the hours going to be? What are the hours going to be?
We'll ask the applicant to address that, because I do think it was in their application, so when we're done, we'll ask them to come up and answer that question, okay?
Sure. As far as overnight parking, my understanding is, there's not supposed to be overnight parking on Pleasant Street as it is.
That's right.
It doesn't work. There are people that live on Randolph Avenue that have no parking. They have a one-car driveway, maybe two. When they have company, where do they park? They don't park on Randolph Ave. They all park on Pleasant Street. Several nights, especially the weekend nights, people are parking on Pleasant Street. It's never been enforced. I've never seen a ticket go on anybody's car. Commercial vehicles, it says, no commercial vehicles up Pleasant Street. They fly up and down there, up Pleasant Street. And then the other thing I can see is during the winter, you put people parking on both sides of Pleasant Street in the wintertime, after they've plowed, people trying to get up Pleasant Street, I can see a lot of accidents. I've seen a lot of accidents in my years there. When I was growing up, as the gentleman, one of the gentlemen said, that was even less of an angle, and I saw a person getting peeled by the fence, and they had to cut him out and take him with the fence in, and up to Milton Hospital. That's how fast they were going back then. And it just seems that people have now got used to that corner, even though it's sticking out and flying up there. I can just see a lot of, a lot more accidents, especially with, people aren't going to slow down because they see cars on either side. They're just going to keep going, and I can see a lot of problems there. But, yeah, I would like, I mean, I just, I see the parking as a terrible situation. The noise, a terrible situation. With so many people, I mean, you say, oh, it's only six people, well, it's not, it could be, as somebody brought up. And they also said something about a one-year lease, so you've got a woman there that gets pregnant, has a baby, there's a baby now, there's a spouse or a significant other, and it's going to be pretty bad, in my opinion. If there was a proposal for another business where there would be a nine-to-five type thing, I would, you know, look at that more favorably, but this, I don't think should be granted. I think it's, it should be a neighborhood situation. I can understand the applicant's problem with renovating, you know, generating revenue, but that's, you know, he chose to buy the building. We're already living there. Anyway.
Okay, thank you. We're going to ask the applicant to address some of the things that they can address, after we hear from anyone else who might like to come forward. Okay, one more?
I'm Liz McRae.
I'm Donna Botter. I'm 44 Pleasant Street.
Okay.
And I have to say, I think differently. I think the design of the building and having the trellis, and having cars park to slow down. I live in the middle, right across from Kathleen Lane, and I feel like it would slow everything down on Pleasant Street. And I would fear what the businesses would be that would go in there, as far as delivery businesses, and kids driving, Uber Eats, and things of that sort, where it could be a business that delivers food out of there, and, you know, it's an app on their phone, and we have young kids driving down the street, and I, I don't know, I see the project as being good for the neighborhood, forward-thinking. And I don't think the clientele is going to be, you know, girl getting pregnant, and I see it more as single professionals divorcing, traveling, you know, doesn't want to have two places, and wants a tiny little place and travel and do her thing, so I, no, I'm just for the project.
I was just asking a question about if you, enforcement is very difficult, so that's why I brought up that example. I'm not saying, I think our town does need a variety of housing, and we do need some smaller options. I'm just trying to find a way to make it work.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's seen, it's a little faster than Milton probably is thinking, but it is the future. I mean, and it's, it'll be here regardless, and I have to say, everything the Falcones have done in Milton is in keeping, and beautiful, and done well, and then you could have somebody come in and not do so well. So I feel like for my neighborhood and for where I live, it's definitely a project that would work for us. Yeah, and I have a 25-year-old daughter who already wants a micro. She already wants in, so, you know, it's definitely a faster, forward-thinking, but I think it's a good thing for Milton.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here who would like to come forward? All right, before Marion and the team come back forward, Brian, I just want to-
A couple of quick follow-ups.
Yeah, I just want to note for the record that we have an email from Brian Walsh, who is at, he and his wife, Laura, live at 56 Pleasant Street. They've lived there since 1985, and they sent a long, one-page letter in support of the application. And I'm not going to read the whole thing into the record, but I do want to make a note of that. And then also, Julia received a phone call in the planning department from Kathy Grant of 27 Pleasant Street, and she had some concerns that she would like for us to be aware of. There are six of them, so I'll just quickly summarize what they are. Parking is a concern as the street is lined with cars when parking, when bakery operating, and it can be difficult for cars to maneuver. Traffic is a big problem already with extremely fast cut-through traffic with the sharp corner. She mentions the building has multiple variances. We talked about why that exists. It's the pre-existing, non-conforming scenario. The small apartments is she's concerned about. They're saying that there's already been an increase in activity in the area with the development at Kathleen Way, and she's saying that the historical property should be preserved in its original state. Okay, Brian?
Just a couple of follow-throughs for the applicant. One is, do any of these units, and you may not know this, this might have to be a follow-up for yourselves, but do any of these units under what they would be able to command under what would be considered a market rate? Does that market rate qualify as an affordable unit, whether it's registered or otherwise? Would it be affordable according to AMI as a market rate unit here? Would be a question I have. And then I would also, if it's possible, I'd like to see a turning template for a standard-sized automobile to get out, get in and out of these parking spaces, the public ones, not necessarily employee spaces.
So with that template, I would add, one of my more detailed comments that I was going to add is really an analysis and a summary of how you think that service will be handled. So deliveries, timing of deliveries, trash pickup. I mean, one of the things that I've seen in neighborhoods, in tight neighborhoods, in urban areas in particular, is that trash pickup is every day, so that you, if there's food, you know, how you ma, it's a food operation, so someone hasn't raised it here, but it's been raised in other instances. Rodents, you know, you don't want, have any pests associated with a food operation. We have a dumpster here. So really, like, how you would plan to manage the delivery, so part of that might be what size vehicle, you know, restrictions on the hours at which deliveries can be taken, it's posted, it's enforced, particular hours that the trash pickup would be. And again, that's a management kind of commitment.
May I add to that?
Yes.
Snow storage, so, or snow removal, where will you put your mounds of snow?
Yeah, that's a good question.
And so, if we're-
I just have a quick follow-up to what you just said.
Okay.
And this sort of goes towards the idea of taking an existing, pre-existing, non-conforming in two uses, whether it's by variance or otherwise. There are two uses here that are basically not regulated today by any guidelines. So you've got a retail bakery use that's going on here with- So you've got a retail bakery use that's going on here with no opportunity to comment on loading areas, trash disposal, rodents, parking, et cetera. And you've got an office space that could be any business, really. Again, no opportunity to comment on those things. So this application does give the planning board and the zoning board an opportunity to condition those uses with, with requirements for regulations on the first floor and the third floor. So that's something that all of us, the Butters and the boards, should be thinking about as we look at an application like this, is what can we do to improve those existing uses that are allowed that we couldn't otherwise do?
So, I mean, one of the things, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna comment on the smaller unit sizes versus larger unit sizes. And, you know, you're looking at square footage of residential. So if you do a larger unit, so let's say you take two units, let's say instead of six, you have three, but it's the same square footage and you have more bedrooms, you're looking at the same number of cars and the same number of people. So it's just a question of who the people are. Are they a family with kids, or are they a young professional, someone who's working down the street? I do think we have to be careful about how we characterize somebody who might live in a smaller apartment. I agree with the comment from one of the neighbors on that. And I would hope that everyone will respect that in terms of their comments. Rich?
I just had a question, two questions. 19 Pleasant Street, does that go all the way to the back?
Yes.
It does. And there's another parcel in the back here, it says Gregory, says, did they comment at all, or have they made, made any comments on the proposal?
Marion mentioned that they had spoken with them, right, about the lighting?
I, um...
Are you speaking?
The one in the very, the one at the...
To the rear, we have, we have communicated. They came to the site, they came to the building walk. One of them is here tonight, I believe, and came to the Board of Appeals and spoke in favor of the application. We have spoken to Greg Zizula, who is the owner of the property. He's favorable to the application. I don't believe he's here tonight. And there hasn't really been any, there's nothing, there's a horse farm up on the top of the hill, they own that, and they own the land around it. The neighbors own, their backyard goes way back. And, and then, you're right, the Zizula property is behind that.
Yeah, I just was concerned, like, I was curious at what they're thought, because that is the closest. I mean, that, there's no, I mean, the parking space goes right up to the fence.
We would be happy to get a letter from them, if you'd like.
Yeah, I was just curious. I mean, if, if they're here and they're happy with what you just said, I mean, that's, I'm happy with that. I just was curious.
I did wanna mention, too, that I did watch the tape and took notes. I didn't get her name, but she said that they like the use proposal, and they were interested in reviewing the plans in more detail.
Okay.
So, Marion, some of the things that you heard, did you take some notes, or do you want me to recite them back?
I have some notes, but I hope that you'll tell me what we're leaving out, and we'll respond.
I'm sorry, did you have a question first, Annie?
Um, I actually did. I was wondering why the indoor seating was applied last time?
Indoor seating was applied for, I believe, in 1996.
Yeah.
Before they applied for any outdoor seating.
Oh, okay.
I, I don't know, but I would presume that the cafe was only in operation for less than a year at that time, and everybody wanted to see how it went. And then in 1999, they applied for the outdoor seating, and they did get approval. And it was a time-limited approval, and it has to be renewed. The implication being that you continue looking at how it's working out. Just along those lines, the cafe and the bakery is a currently permitted, permanently permitted use. The outdoor seating is a time-limited permitted use. Already, there is a permit already to do that. The office space is a pre-existing, non-conforming business use that is allowed without any permitting. The, the commercial bakery use has been combined with the cafe use, but the commercial bakery part of this use is a pre-existing, non-conforming use that has continued and is allowed at this site. That does, so, I guess the point is that when we, when you apply and you need this type of permission, it creates an opportunity to regulate where there is no opportunity currently. And some of the problems that have been described are likely attributable to the fact that there is no opportunity to regulate those pre-existing, non-conforming business uses. So the viewpoint of the Falcone, the applicants, is that, well, we're making this proposal, we understand it's going to be a regulated proposal because this particular apartment use requires a variance. The other small changes that are proposed, they're just being requested, they'll either be approved or not approved by the Board of Appeals, and they are. Moving the front seating to the side. That would be an amendment to the current special permit for the outdoor seating, which, incidentally, is a time-limited permit. It's now being granted in five-year increments, but it has to be granted again in 1999. The request to have hours opening for the cafe on Sunday morning is just that, it's a request. If it's not supported, the Board of Appeals doesn't wanna grant it, then we won't get it. Maybe later we'll get it if everything goes well. That was the only new operational request in all of what is being proposed here. The change is the use of the second floor for apartments rather than commercial. And that's where, that, that opens up the opportunity for a lot more oversight as to what the parking arrangements are going to be and, and so forth. So, that's to answer your question. Sorry it was so long. And, and when you're ready, I'll answer some of the other questions.
I had one other question, which was, I'm interested to hear from the Historic Commission. I don't know if they'll be writing a letter or speaking at a future meeting, but their support goes a long way with me.
Historical Commission did write a letter to the Board of Appeals. We met with them, saying that they support preserving the building. It's very simple. So if they wanted to make more comments at some point, they could. But I, I think, every board and commission has its own area of jurisdiction, and they've been pretty careful about that. They really wanna see the building preserved. But they're not the town planners, and they're not the Board of Appeals. I think they wanna be deferential to your role as planners in terms of trying to decide what good uses are. They did discuss with us the fact that a historic building like this must find new uses in order to continue. They just, otherwise, they, they crumble, basically. They can't be maintained. And so they recognize that there will be a change of use, and that the inside of the building is going to be used differently than it has in the past. But they didn't recommend how it should be used.
Okay, Rich, one comment I'd like to make on the Historic. I do, I've lived here long enough to see historic buildings demolished for new uses. In part, it can be hard to find an economic reuse for an existing building, especially one as old as this, that has so many code issues that to bring it up to current codes for three uses, mix of uses, is complicated and expensive. And I, again, want to say that I commend the applicant for attempting this because somebody could buy this and tear it down and put up a mundane, single-family that would meet the underlying zoning. But we, we would lose yet another piece of our history in Milton, like we've done and others have lamented, from the Women's Club to the rectory across from St. Agatha's, to other, others that are in danger for lack of maintenance. So I, I do think that that makes the application somewhat unique in, in terms of how we look at being creative and finding ways to mitigate so that we can keep, see if we can keep that piece of history. Rich?
I was just curious at the timeline for this, because I was, I was interested in taking up, I don't know if anybody else was, to walk.
Yeah, I'd love to see it. As I mentioned, I think they're gonna, they're interested in getting our viewpoints and questions tonight. They're gonna go back, I'm sure, take into consideration our comments. So, I don't know the timing of when they'll go back to the Board of Appeal or timing of coming back to us, but definitely will need to come back to us at least once.
We're going back to the Board of Appeals on the 17th of January. I believe that's the date. We will make available, and we could try to set a time tonight just so that you don't run into the problem of not, not having public notice if more than two planning board members happen to wanna be there. We could try to set a date tonight to open the facility again so that you can walk through it and look at it, and walk around the exterior.
That's right.
Look at the neighbors' properties so you get their perspective, too, in terms of what it looks like. So Mr. Falcone's here tonight, so I'm gonna ask him to suggest a couple times to you.
Yeah, I'd be fine doing that now.
Yeah.
Okay. Marion, did you, before we do that, though, did you wanna answer any of the other questions?
I do, so, so I'll try to address some of them at least. Let's see. And this is partly engineering, but the driveway does not have parking spaces on both sides of it, in this proposal. There are two spaces along the building, which we were able to fit in because of the width and the turning area and so forth. But other than that, the driveway is a two-way entrance and exit. So that may have been happened in the past. And there were, there were angled parking spaces proposed in that driveway in 1995, and they were used for a while, and then they sort of stopped being used because people don't like parking, backing out of parking spaces like that. We're not proposing that. This proposal proposes putting 16 of the spaces in the back of the building, and we've left area so that it is possible to turn a car. But I understand you wanna see turning widths and some more analysis of that, which I think we can provide. So that, that answers one question. The, the no smoking, the Falcone's have a no-smoking view, let me put it that way. They would not allow smoking on this site. Now, of course, you have to have, you know, enforcement, or you gotta watch what your tenants are doing. It can be written into a tenant lease. There's clearly no smoking inside. They can also require that there be no, no smoking, I believe, in the, in the outside of the building. So I understand that concern. I think we all hear it, and if it's possible to prohibit it, it would be prohibited. That would be the Falcone's preference. So I hope that that can be addressed by an outright prohibition. We are providing 18 parking spaces. The reason, it might have been, there might have been some inconsistencies in these applications because, at one point, we had two head-in parking spaces in the front of the building. And we don't like the idea of head-in parking spaces because people have to back out of them into the traffic. And we discussed that with various people, including the building commissioners, and, you know, not that they're prohibited, but just that it's not the best way to do the parking spaces. So we finally decided we should just take those out. If the planning board told us they want us to put those back in the plan, we'll put them back in. But we thought it would be better not to put them in the plan, so as onsite parking spaces, we're now providing 18, not 20. The 20 was because of the two head-in parking spaces that were on, I think the original plan that you got had two head-in spaces in the front of the building. That's why there was some inconsistency there. We, oh, the, so, I don't, I didn't really address this in my remarks, I did in the application. The apartments definitely would have a minimum one-year lease. These are not short-term rentals. These are regular apartments, and we hear what you're saying about the smallest-sized apartments, so we'll be looking at the design some more.
Can I ask a quick question, because you're talking about parking?
Yeah.
And I know, I think April asked, but anyway, so you're probably gonna respond to it, but do you lose any spaces here with snow? Because it seems like you would have to literally remove all the snow.
They will.
Or you'll lose spaces.
They're gonna have to respond.
They'll have to remove it, okay.
Or store it, but I think they're gonna have to remove it.
Okay, so that's...
I think this is a situation where that's what's gonna have to happen.
Okay, all right.
But I'm not the person in charge of the maintenance, and we'll, we'll give you a more direct answer to that.
Okay, cool, thank you.
We'll have to respond in writing.
I just didn't even know if that was possible, so.
Oh, yeah.
It's possible.
Excellent. No, that's, it's gonna make it expensive.
It's an, it's an additional cost to do, using this building, so it certainly creates more complications. On the setbacks to the rear, first of all, to the property on the right, as you, as you face the property from Pleasant Street. There's, beginning where, where the parking lot sort of angles, it's an eight-foot setback. Before that, it's wider. So it's almost, it's not 10 feet, it's eight feet. Whether it's possible to make it 10 feet, I'm not sure, maybe it is. Again, we're trying to give proper turning area in our parking lot. So we, we put it at eight feet. We didn't think it made that much difference between eight feet and 10 feet. We're providing the trees, we're providing the fence, which is going to be both a visual barrier and, and be aesthetically more pleasing than the current appearance. And, as I said, we intend to prohibit smoking. There will not be anybody smoking in this back parking lot. Along the back narrow neck, which is the end of the right-of-way, it's not possible to create any wider setback. It's pretty far back from the house, it's pretty far back from the house on the other side. And the Butter to the rear has not objected to the fact that those parking spaces are so close to the rear.
So could you add to your site plan more context so we could see where the property boundary is in the, in the rear? So the Zizula property, how that...
Where the house is set.
So you'd like a plan that shows this placed in the context of surrounding lots?
Yeah, placed in the three direct Butters.
Drop into the G.I.
Yeah, just, you could pull it from G.I.S., right?
Yeah.
Sure, yeah, we can do that.
It's pretty easy to see.
And, and if you had some approximate dimensions, you know, from property lines for houses?
Sure, yeah, okay.
Marion, I have some other things I'm going to request when you're done with your response, okay?
Okay. Your question about market rates, I think these are gonna be market-rate units.
So my question was...
I don't think they're proposed as affordable units.
But I just wanna clarify my question. My question was not whether they were proposed as affordable. My question was, as market-rate units?
Do they qualify?
Do they qualify? Not that they need to be restricted as such, but just because they're so small, right? Does a market-rate unit for three, does a market-rate rent for a 350-square-foot unit or a 400-square-foot unit, does that meet the obligation of AMI, is my question?
It wouldn't qualify under D-H-C-D rules.
I just wanna know if, I, I just wanna understand if it's an affordable unit, not qualifying, not going on our registry, but if it would be an affordable unit that we could, that meets workforce housing needs in the town.
The reason I ask, if you were asking about 80% AMI is because some places will consider it 100% AMI or 120% AMI.
It's 100.
Yeah, because AMI is like 65,000 or 68,000 for a family of four. I don't know what it is for a single person, but it could be looked up.
Yeah, and I'm not looking for them to be restricted, I just wanna understand if by default they are.
Yeah, I don't know how it works with such small units. Yeah, I, I think that, I'm pretty sure that, you know, it wouldn't, it wouldn't count on the town.
I know it's not gonna count, and I don't want it to count.
Okay, so that's okay.
I would love for it to count, but I understand it won't. I just would like to know if as they're, the expected pricing would be, what would, would be within that range?
Certainly the tiny, these very small units would be cheaper than a larger apartment unit at market rates.
That's what we're getting at, yeah.
There's no question about that.
Yeah.
I can't give you more information, I'll ask the Falcone's to provide more information. We're gonna give you turning templates. Oh, managing deliveries, yes, we could establish hours for, understand that under the current operation, there are no restrictions on delivery hours. There are no, there are no conditions in existing permits that say garbage trucks can only come between certain hours and can only approach the property in a certain way. What I do know that is the way garbage trucks, full-size trucks, now empty the garbage is they back in and they drive out forwards. So they are not, they don't back into traffic coming out of the property. Given the size of a full-size garbage truck in the future, I think that's also how it would have to occur. For other trucks, if they were, if they... Can you explain where the, where the delivery locations are on that?
I'm sorry, Marion, just given the hour, can you come back to us with that when you come back with other information?
Yes, we can.
I wanna make sure we get to our next agenda item.
Yep, I understand.
And I do wanna give you some more to-do list things.
Okay, I just wanna see if there's anything else I need to do. Most of these are items that you told us you wanted. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
All right. So typically, our requirements for a site plan application require the proposed contours as well as the existing contours. So I know a lot of this isn't going to change, but my understanding, looking at this architecturally, is that there are, to do this ramp at the side, it's pretty steep. I went back again on Sunday to take a look at this. This handicapped access on the side and how that's gonna work.
Yeah, that will likely have a retaining wall.
You're gonna have some grading work to do. Getting your second means of egress from that stair out to the street, you're gonna need some kind of steps, walkway, something. Or you're gonna need to connect to the patio that connects to the ramp, but none of that's really worked out, and it needs to be shown. I'm a little concerned about how that existing ramp and the new outdoor seating and the architecture of it all work together, because they don't, the ramp is not historically consistent at all with the existing. And if you don't need that for handicapped access, I wonder why you have it, if you can use steps to get you out.
Well, sadly, sadly, I spoke to the building commissioner, and he informed me that if we have an entrance in the front, we have to have handicapped entrance. And that means we have to have the ramp. So either we give up the front entrance entirely, which is kind of part of the building, or we... or we have to have the handicapped access. Perhaps can be designed in a more attractive way. And we will give you the design.
Yeah.
Which you don't have.
I think, I'm just raising it as an issue, design issue, that I'd like you to look at. And I'd like more information. So like a blown-up section here with the landscape plan with the contours. We want to see what kind of railings you're proposing to use. I think the historical commission would be interested in what historically appropriate materials and details on those. Is there, it shows like a trellis or a roof over the outdoor seating. What is that composed of? You provided a front elevation, but you didn't provide side elevations. There's no dimensions, materials called out. Not being critical, but I'm just saying, these are the things that we're going to need.
So front and side elevations. What was the last thing you just said?
Dimensions. And on the plans and on the elevations, as well as materials called out. And when you look at that landscape plan in front, where you have the bike rack, I like that you have a bike rack, but I think you should think about where you put it, especially since you're removing the parking spaces. And you should think about what kind, what kind of rack it is. The cut sheet that you supplied in the packet is for a metal halide type of lamp. I'd rather, that's kind of a yellow lamp, an older technology. I'd rather see an LED with a 3,000 Kelvin temperature, something that you can control a little bit better, the kind of color you get out of it. I noticed that you have new lights mounted on the building. So when you do the photometric plan, if you include those lights in that photometric And I know I asked you, Steve, on site about the elevator overrun, but if you could make sure that you can fit that overrun into that existing sloped roof, I think that would be helpful.
Looking at it.
And then lastly, mechanicals. We spent a lot of time talking about mechanicals for the Milton Marketplace site plan application. Their location, their sizes. If you're putting them on a sloped roof and you're not creating some kind of, you know, space for them, then you're looking at propping them up on a slope on some kind of, and that could be visually overpowering on that building. So I think we need a lot more information about, even if it's, you're taking an estimate, since you don't have a tenant for the café, you know, you could probably get some kind of estimate from a mechanical engineer. And once you have that, what we approved for Milton Marketplace is that they're going to use variable-speed fans, that's for noise control. And they're, they're going to have a pollution control unit to cut down on grease and odors, a scrubber. And then they're going to have acoustic shrouds on the compressors. Again, you might be more concerned, and some of the direct abutters might be more concerned about, you know, increased mechanical noise if this is done properly in the café. Yes?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is there going to be central air?
I imagine there would be.
Heat pumps, individual heat pumps in each unit.
So you would have individual compressors with individual heat pumps, so, like you would have on a standard home air conditioner compressor outside?
So there'd be six separate.
And then you'd have it for the commercial space as well. So those, that's why I said we'd need to see where those locations are, the sizes, et cetera.
Where's the mechanicals located now?
They said they're going to go on the roof, but it's a sloped roof. And I have a question about that.
I don't think they already.
Oh, you got nothing?
Existing.
All right.
That's the thing. I mean, the building as it's operating now, it doesn't have any of these features that it should have.
Okay, yeah.
I do know that, you know, air conditioning noise emission is greatly improved. It's not as horrible a problem as it once was. But I understand that you'd like more detail. And I did listen to some of the Milton Marketplace application process. I understand the detail you were looking for there. We'll say that the café is very small. The caterer is very small.
The number 672 is really close. And so that's going to really matter where you put stuff.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, for example, if you said, I'm going to put it on the roof of this lower section, that's right next to their house. So, you know, we wouldn't. I know, but we don't have a plan.
Yeah.
And that's the sort of thing that, the detail that we like to see.
I know. I understand that you would need a plan for that, and that our intention was to locate it as far as possible from neighbors. But that's all I can tell you at this point.
Yeah, so if you could come back to us with some information about those things, I think we're going to need to move on to our next agenda item, unless anybody else has something they'd like to request for the next meeting.
I have one small thing.
Okay, April?
The front, where the patio was pre-existing for the old bents, heard a couple of comments about there being a lack of open space or green space or anything. Same comment about the bike rack, maybe that could be moved a little bit, and this could be just greened up to give people a place to sit outside if they so choose. That's away from the abutters.
Yeah, I think without parking in the front, it does provide more opportunity to make the front attractive.
Yeah, I mean, it kind of looks like that's what the plan was already.
Yeah, just the plan doesn't correspond with the elevation.
Well, this is fairly recent, the drawing that you're looking at. I appreciate all the time that you've spent. It's really helpful. We have been talking to the abutters. We understand they do have concerns. We're going to try to address them as much as we can. And I just want to say in closing that it is difficult to do something with a building of this age. It is a building that's considered kind of precious by a lot of people in Milton. If we can do something, that would be great. But we need to work with the planning board on how to do it.
Before you go, I had asked you to wait. But you wanted to check with Mr. Falcone about a time to go visit the building?
Oh, is there a time block when you can open the building again?
Set up just three of us.
We'll get a date for the next meeting.
Yes, we will get that too. But we'd like to do it before you have a date for your next meeting. So next week, weekday evening, is that best?
Is a weekend okay, or is it, you want to do it in a?
Weekend would be okay, wouldn't it, or not?
I can't do a weekend.
I could be there.
I can do either. I can do it.
Okay, so what do you want to suggest? It's up to you this coming weekend.
I'm just going to call myself and make my own.
Yeah, Marian, I can call you. All right.
All right.
Yeah, but we need to set it at the meeting tonight, because you need to announce when it is. That way.
If it's one-on-one.
Yeah, but you don't know if it will be. You can make individual appointments if you want to.
That's what I'm going to do.
But I'd like to set a time when you can come together if you want to, or some of you can come together.
We did, we did.
How about Saturday at 2:00 P.M.?
I can do Saturday.
We just don't, we don't have a lot of talk about.
I honestly don't know.
Don't know yet.
You're not going to hold a meeting, you're not going to deliberate.
Right, we're not doing that, so we don't have to.
But you're not violating the open meeting law. If you announce it tonight that you're having us, what we call, I'd call it an internal site view, call it a site view. And it'd be sat, this Saturday at 2:00 P.M. We'll be there at the Bents Building. If you would like to go inside and look at the exterior as well.
That works for me.
We'll have the building open for you. Is there at least one person who can come Saturday too, so we know it's worth doing? Yeah, okay.
Okay, and then as far as a continuation of this hearing?
February 14th.
February 14th? Marian?
February 14th is okay for me.
Did we have anything else that night, Bill?
Okay, yep, that's okay for all of us.
Okay, so I'll take a motion.
Working on it with Phil.
Move, do we move it yet to a time? Is Walcut on a time yet?
No.
No, so I'll move to continue this hearing to February 14th at 7:15.
For a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, I would like to, I was going to make a suggestion. We extend the meeting. Okay, go ahead, Brian.
Motion to extend the meeting to 10:30.
Second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Marian.
Thank you.
This is the only other thing left, is the Walcut.
Might have stolen it. I'd do that.
No, I haven't. I have a theory. I know we don't enforce it. That's why I brought it for the example.
But then it kind of got a little bit of a lay.
Yeah.
Oh, sure. Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. I think this was your strong point.
Okay, thank you.
Shut off. I've got it over here.
We already went here, and here we are now.
Wait, let me find it. When was that mine right there? It's going to be mine.
Yeah, it's invisible. There, we are here.
Right. Okay, that's fine.
And we'll take that one off, and that one's down.
Okay.
Those are the ones we have to.
Wait, move what into what? Move these.
Need to be put in.
Right, 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 understood, okay. Please, join us.
I was right over the Napansia reservoir, so we could hear the sponges in our backyard.
Nice, good, nice.
Yes, and.
Where's Brian?
Question.
Ah, he's not allowed.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
He was playing pretty well.
It's gotten better. The town, I just want to say something. The Board of Appeal is.
15th, okay.
Rain does all the.
Okay. Okay, do you want me to announce it?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, the 13th?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll announce that to, that correction. Is it 7 o'clock, probably?
They're always 7:30.
7:30, okay.
It's the 14th.
14th?
It was great.
I want my kids to be.
No, I have Tuesday. Tuesday to 15th.
Tuesday to 15th. And, all right, the 15th, so that's what we need to make sure of. Okay.
You can check with them.
Okay. Okay, thank you. While we're waiting for Rich and Brian to come back, Marian notified me that the Board of Appeal for the Seven Pleasant Fence is not on the 17th of January, but rather on the 15th. So if anyone's watching and they're interested in going to that, it's on the 15th. Okay, Ned?
Good evening. I guess we're waiting for Brian and Rich.
But they know who you are, so you can introduce yourselves in the meantime.
Introduce myself as Ned Corcoran, counsel to Northland Residential, the proponent in this case. I'm joined by Alan Ockman, who is the landscape planner and one of our key design folks. We've got a PowerPoint presentation to present on site planning relative to the site. And we have our.
So for the audience that might be here or might be watching, we had discussed the, on our planning, anyway, that we would talk about architecture and historic preservation tonight, but your team's architect is ill.
Our architect is ill and was not able to be here tonight. And so we're, we will discuss a little bit of sort of architecture in the context of the site plan, just to raise it. But there are historical issues in context with architecture that need to be discussed in more detail, and we look forward to another evening for that. And so we asked the board to pick a night to reschedule that, that part of the discussion.
Do you want to talk about schedule first, or do you want to get into presentation?
However, however you'd like to do it.
Brian?
I'm confused. We were very concerned about ULI tap day and booking other things on ULI tap day. But from what we discussed earlier, we don't have to talk about anything for ULI tap after the presentation.
Right.
So.
I think we're worried it's going to go over an hour and a half, which it always does.
So it'll be, that'll be 7:30 then?
I understand. So you're not worried about, you're just thinking the meetings aren't going to start at 7:00? Got it, got it.
Right, but if it's, even if it starts, we haven't scheduled anything else, but even if it starts at 7:30 or 8:00, we still have until at least 10:00. So if we want something besides stormwater, I think we could consider that. Because, I mean, I think that between the peer review and your engineers, they've been working. So I'm assuming that they'll have worked out much of the issues, and we'll just get kind of a briefing of that, right? So I'm not sure that there'll be a lot of new questions that they haven't already discussed coming from us. So I'm kind of anticipating.
We may have more time than we do tonight.
Yeah, I think we could schedule something else.
I think we're happy to.
Okay, so what do you want to?
Can we just move architectural to the next meeting?
Do you want to move, do you want to check with your architect and see if he's available?
I think we need to check on his health and his recuperation and time to prepare.
Okay, and if not that, then you could consider the affordable housing or the traffic.
We can do affordable housing and. So let me do. Why don't we also see if we can find out if traffic will be done?
Yeah, and we can.
Since the peer review is going to be there. We can check in and get back to Bill in time to at least post information about what.
All right, so what we're anticipating is that we could possibly be talking about affordable housing, traffic, and stormwater on the 10th.
Right.
It may be that we can't cover all of that, or it may be that somebody on your team is not ready. But that's what we're anticipating we could talk about, okay? So we're not going to commit to 100% of that, going to stick to that schedule, right?
Right.
Okay. And then that would say, leave us to, so perhaps on the architecture, we hope.
Can we just sync it up with historic?
I would suggest that we move those to January 24th.
All right, that's what I was going to suggest as well.
Which one?
Architecture and historic preservation.
Meredith, I see that you're here. Can you take a note of that? Okay.
We'd already planned on having that conversation.
Okay, that we talked about last time? Okay.
Construction management, I think, is a fairly quick overview. Tree preservation, I think, is a little bit more detailed, because there are significant plans, and we've, and there's issues obviously to be discussed with the Shade Tree Advisory Committee, because we've had a couple of meetings, and they've reviewed, and their, the bylaw provides for them to meet with you to help provide some guidance on, at least with respect to trees that would be removed, and how they, what would be removed and why, and what replacements it would be. So that's likely to be more detailed, but I think construction management certainly
Tree preservation, I think, is a little bit more detailed because there are significant plans and we've, and there's issues obviously to be discussed with the Shade Tree Advisory Committee, because we've had a couple of meetings and they've reviewed, and their, the bylaw provides for them to meet with you to help provide some guidance on, at least with respect to trees that would be removed and how they, what would be moved and why, and what replacements it would be, so that's likely to be more detailed, but I think construction management certainly is not.
So what, when were you anticipating the landscape, more detailed landscape, as part of tonight's site plan discussion, or as part of tree preservation?
We talked last, on the thirteenth, I guess was the last meeting, we had put landscape on the twenty-fourth, and I'm looking at.
I have it on the twenty-fourth.
I thought I just had my.
You have it on the twenty-fourth?
So maybe we move it to where tree preservation is?
Yeah, right.
I have it under the twenty-fourth.
Okay, so we're going to put.
So here's.
That's a lot on the twenty-fourth then.
CM, tree preservation and landscaping?
No, architecture and historical too.
No, I thought that was, oh, I, no, I thought we were moving tree preservation and landscaping to the fourteenth.
To February fourteenth.
Oh, all right, let's do that.
Yeah, sorry.
We can move that with construction management.
So you're gonna move tree preservation and landscape to the fourteenth?
And construction management?
Yeah, CM.
And then.
And landscape.
Architecture and historic preservation.
Okay, so let's go over it.
Thank you.
The tenth, stormwater, traffic, and affordable housing, pending discussion with the consultants to make sure they're ready. January twenty-fourth, historical. February fourteenth, tree preservation and landscape, plus construction management.
Right.
And then follow-up would be after that, I'm sorry, Denny?
Do we know that the stack, that the Shade Tree Advisory Committee is available on the fourteenth?
It's a month away. It's a month away, I'd hope they would be.
And if not, we can.
At the last meeting, I asked if we could find out.
Oh, did you? What, did you ask Phil?
Do you remember if the Shade Tree Advisory Committee can do it on the fourteenth?
I don't know, I'll ask.
Thank you.
We just moved landscaping.
And then February twenty-eighth would be any additional follow-ups, right? So while we're not going to talk about the architecture and historical tonight, I do, I have reviewed it somewhat, and I would like to make a few requests for you, won't be just for discussion, just for you to go back and look at and come back with, we can do that at the end, okay?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. So go ahead then with your, you have a presentation, I know?
Yes.
It's loaded up by you.
And we're happy to see the model in the middle of the table with the plexi off, it's nice to see it.
And you can refer to it.
Yes.
You're putting it back.
I even put some, I even put some pictures in the PowerPoint, because I was afraid the model was off in the corner.
Here, let me move this here.
So what we hope to talk about tonight is primarily site planning with, you know, where it touches into architecture and a bit of, oh, is there, can everybody see?
Oh, sure.
So we want to walk through, sort of do a little bit, you know, backwards looking into, into how the site plan got to be the way it is, how we got to town meeting, why the project looks the way it does, and what values are sort of embedded into the site plan, and that goes back to town meeting and all the work we did to that point, and then going forward to the submitted to you. So we're gonna touch on that process and how the zoning got defined, talking about the buildings to retain, how that influenced it, open space commitment, tree preservation goals, so that gets us through most of it, and then to touch on some of the issues that came up last month and before, talking about the five fifty setback, the carriage house issues, sidewalks, the metal basin lighting as they apply to site planning. So again, going kind of back to where we first started looking at this with you, and this is how we think we've begun almost every presentation, is just a reminder of the site and what it looks like in full leaf. The site planning starts with the existing conditions, and so by now, I think everybody's done site walks, site drives, oops. And the, so the manor house, let me use the other meter, the manor house, the barn cluster associated with the manor house, the guesthouse cluster across the stream, Walcott House, the carriage house, which form a unit in a way, and the red farmhouse cluster, smaller group of buildings up here, and the Devon's House standing alone across from the big meadow, the manor house on the lawn. So as we came to the, the process, just a reminder of where we, we ended up in a way, or where we're headed as we talk through site planning tonight, and May of twenty-seventeen, this is the plan that was the, the way the project was defined as presented to town meeting, work with the selectmen and the like, defining the number of homes, homes to be retained, six affordable units off-site, defined setbacks of the property lines, talked about the relocated driveway entrance here as the primary entrance into the site, sixty percent minimum open space, trail connection, fifty-five plus age restriction, and so on. Knowing the site first, as most of us do from Canton Avenue, value established very early on to preserve that, that streetscape, the, in the views into the property and not to alter that, so into the clearing beyond is the, the big manor house lawn with the house way up the hill, looking up here, panoramic photo, preserving that was a goal from day one. Continuing along Canton Avenue, basic same edge treatment, the wall picks up about where the arrow is and continues then for the rest of the frontage. And it was anticipated early on that the center driveway would be the main, about the main entrance into the property, but, and the site plans will show this, it got scooted over and we, as part of the zoning as well, that the entrance should be relocated to, to hook into the property, eliminate the straight-on shot up into the view into the, into the community. Once you get behind the, the new entrance cut, the driveway comes through a gap in the existing vegetation, through that saddle in the land. Moving into the site, we did, through site inventory, knowing what we were seeing, preserving existing tree line, stone walls up along the, the field here, significant trees, the existing channelized stream bed, intermittent stream which cuts through the site here, as you're familiar with. Other site features include, in this portion of the site, geological sort of outcropping, termed an esker, and then open fields above, so as opposed to some of the larger open areas that we're preserving there, up above off the view shed of Canton Avenue, the upper fields are opportunities to site homes without loss of trees. And then again, early on, the manor house, the Walcott House, the Devon's House were the three existing structures on-site that were identified and by most all parties for preservation, the Devon's House kind of came and went throughout the process, whether it would be preserved or not, in the end, of course, it is. So as the process continued, committing to a large percentage of the site as open space became one of the, the site planning goals, and sixty percent of the land to be preserved under conservation restriction was set as the benchmark for how much of the site we, we aim to preserve in, insofar as possible in broad swaths of land, not narrow strips or isolated islands. Tree preservation as well, and this is the tree preservation plan in this middle package colored up for easier reading, but of course, when the goal is to preserve large open areas, the tension is in other areas, we do need to remove trees, so those were noted on-site, cataloged, and highlighted where the site plan works around existing trees, for instance, and where the site layout does require removals. And then that plan also comments on condition, there are areas where age or disease or overcrowding, not all trees and their condition being equal, so that's noted in the set. So going way back to, to how we worked, here's a plan from January twenty-sixteen with north up, and so we included a few plans kind of at six-month intervals, so you can see how the plan evolved as we worked amongst the team, we worked with neighborhood focus groups and concerned boards and town members to shape what might, might, might happen here, working towards the, the May twenty-seventeen town meeting. So you'll see, from the start, the program was an age-targeted or restricted condominium home community with homes located in one, two, or, or three-unit buildings. Unit count here at this, this early stage was upwards of seventy-five homes. We did, in this early plan, preserve all three of the homes that are in the, in the current plan for preservation, there were two driveway, two primary active driveways in this initial plan, but the manor house lawn, the Devon's Field are preserved, and site, side setbacks begin to be delineated here, much smaller than we ended up with, a hundred feet off property lines was sort of a starting spot, and then, but generally, you can kind of see a dance between existing circulation on-site, proposed roads, roads generally single-loaded, located on the uphill side of, of the home sites. And early sketch not working out, some, held us at length and so forth. Six months later, the unit count's down to sixty-four, and south is now up, and, and the Devon's House is replaced by a duplex, so that one came in and out of, of focus as, as we worked through the site plan, we're down to one driveway, fire lane here, there's a minor shift here, and that began in part with an alignment across the, the road to some driveways that we wanted to break, but as we got into it farther and walked the site many more times, the driveway was moved further up, and the setbacks are beginning to, to increase, you'll see, front setback, back up at two fifty, two hundred fifty feet, side setbacks still at one hundred. So I think functionally, they might be larger. So by the end of twenty sixteen, we had a plan with fifty-eight units, so that's this plan, which included ten homes down here in the Devon's cluster area with Devon's still being replaced by new construction. We're still with the two fifty setback, the side setbacks have increased in the unit count, down to fifty-eight, and then, so that was December sixteen, as we were getting ready for town meeting that spring, and in the process of getting ready for that, that meeting, the unit count was reduced to fifty-four, and I forget at which stage affordable units went off-site, but that was part of the, the calculus, along with at this stage, a reduction, a four-unit reduction on-site without a change to the affordable count percentage, and instead of ten units here, three units here, Devon's reserved, and the balance of the homes incorporated up slope into the project, into the neighborhood here.
The, the answer to the question on when the six units went off-site, it was in the fall of twenty sixteen, those units went off-site, so the reduction went from sixty-four to fifty-eight with six units off-site, and then at the last minute during town meeting, agreement was to reduce to fifty-four, but retain six as opposed to reduce to five affordables off-site.
And then part of changing the count in the Devon's cluster was the, the addition of a five hundred and fifty-foot setback, which comes across the site roughly right below that duplex there, comes across just below the point in the property corner there, whereby no new units would be closer than five hundred and fifty feet from an existing street, except for a provision with new units sighted adjacent to an existing dwelling. So that was the, the last part of that piece. So that takes us to May seventeen, and then where we are today, of course, is what we submitted in September of twenty eighteen, and you can see that, and we'll dive into the site plan development really since that concept plan to what we submitted to you here illustrated. One of the things to take away, sort of initially, is the, the building mix, we had two singles, twenty-four duplexes, and then three existing residences retained in the concept plan, the submitted plan, twelve singles, nineteen duplexes, and three existing residences, and we'll talk about how the use of the, the single residences, the increase in, in that count was, was developed and used on-site. And at this stage, really, we're also developing, though we're not digging deep into these units tonight, but we're, we're also developing the architecture and, and thinking through how the units fit on the ground, how, and where key elevations, building façades elevations are in key moments in, in the neighborhood, and so as we look at the, the rendered plan, really, as site planners, we're, we're more looking at a plan that looks more like that and thinking in terms of unit types, and, and we have four basic buildings that are treated in different ways by, by cluster, but some of the underlying features, whether a garage is front-loaded or side-loaded, whether a gable end is treated one way or another, really is what's going on is, is we, you know, work around the site and, and adjust and, and work the blend of, of units, singles and doubles. So we just want to take a look at how that applies or how that, that happens as, as we look at a couple of key moments working up through the site and around the, around the site plan. So if we start with the Devon's Cluster, we're looking at Devon's House here, and in the concept plan, the two homes are, are located here, in the, sort of as we really looked at and thought about sort of why. Why this piece of the, of the zoning was as it was, the, the views kind of coming up this way up Canton Avenue across the field to Devon's were important to preserve, and as we looked at the concept plan, of course, this home, especially moving up slope as it does and into the existing tree line, which is that line there, was really at odds with the goals of preserving Devon's, creating, allowing it to maintain its, its presence on the, on the big field, so the houses slipped behind Devon's here to perform to carriage-like or accessory structure type relationship towards the, the big house. Moving up the hill to the manor house, you'll see, the, the concept was to attach the garages to the, sort of the, the working, workaday end of the, of the house, in the submitted drawings, we understood the house, I think, better, and came to understand that the, the formal, former, formal entry to the home was in this location, and there had been a carriage drive up through that tree line with a drop-off here, so the, as, if Jim were here, he would be able to, to walk us through how that begins to work with the home as it's converted into, to two dwellings, but then going up the hill as well, as you know, in the existing conditions, there are some barn structures that are sort of up the draw of the land that are associated with, with the manor house, so the duplex in the, the concept plan isn't quite right, and, and taking some of the units Jim has developed and treating them off a common driveway here is a, is a subtle nod to, again, the, the history of the, of the site and how we can make a transition between the, some of the neighborhood features we're creating up slope to what happens between that loop road and the back of the manor house.
I'm sorry, can you just go back one, I just want to ask a, a quick question? So what we see like for that line there as compared to here, is that here?
That, that dash there. That dash there would be the 25-foot setback off the stream course in here.
I guess what I'm trying to understand is, so this is the existing carriage barn.
Right, so that tree line there.
That, on this plan, would be in this area?
Yes. Yep, so that line, that canopy line is right there. We're on the nook of the barn there. Does that help?
And that's building five now?
Yes.
That's building four.
This is five now.
Yeah, this is five, yeah.
The new one's five.
That's right, that's five.
Yep.
This is five.
Yep. Moving across the existing crossing, which location is preserved, we come up the hill. And in the concept plan, we come around with six duplexes. We maintain that count, but we took the three furthest uphill and treated them off an eyebrow or shared driveway spur. You can see in the topography here, we're climbing in these three duplexes, so each one of these step quite a lot, one from the next up the hill. As we come to this point, we start to work parallel to the contours.
Sorry, Alan, can I stop you again?
Yes.
Because while we're here at the graphic, the architecturals all depict a condition like this, where you're up and you're sloping down, and you have walkout basements here. But the conditions across here are different than that?
Yes.
So that's one of the things I wanted to ask for, is elevate accurate elevations for the conditions that don't.
That aren't walkouts.
That aren't walkouts, right.
Yeah, right.
So just, I just point out now over here.
And you're going to see that these homes here are very similar that way, 11, 12. So what that allowed us to do was to think about here, we really have, you know, one important end elevation. And as we work up the hill, we have that still. But we have these moments which increase that variety up the hill. We have the changing sites section in the arc, the buildings kind of falling away from view or into view, depending on how you're approaching them, to work through as we work that unit mix up the hill. Continuing across the upper stream crossing, again, same number of units inside the curve, but we've introduced two singles. That's to allow for, sort of, citing the homes sort of on an inside curve, but also responding to the lay of the land. Here, the contours, the ground falls away that, in that direction to the stream, so we're able to turn that building so that its living spaces look out that way. We introduce a different sort of driveway, garage setback, allows us to create spaces between the homes. And on the other side of the road, where we had six homes, we've taken it down to four. We talked a bit about this home last month and why it's sighted the way it is with, into the slope with daylight to this end. And then, these homes facing downslope condition, very similar to these here.
Well, that one you turned.
We turned, yep.
And what the turning works with the topography better, and it gives a little more variety to the streetscape.
Yep.
So that's why I was, here, you know, there's a lot more variety than there is in some other locations here because of that.
Continuing down this way, we took that single or double that opposed the walkout house here, broke that apart to create a different moment along the street here, just like here. Preserve that. At the end of the common driveway, a break in the units. And then going back to catch the, this cluster of units down the end of the, to the T. Six units, now five here, angling this building, again, to work with the grades coming up the slope. Back to the common driveway and five homes located here, whereas we had two in the concept So we're working with the topography, we're working with the homes that we've developed to highlight moments where the side is as much of a front as the street addressing facade of the home. So taken as a whole, we've toggled through this before, so I won't take a lot of time with it. But in terms of the architectural treatment, as you'll see in the upcoming meeting, the way individual clusters of homes are treated in respect to their proximity to one of the three homes, how they work in the land, how they work in the existing context are all calibrated together. So if the model were still in the corner, this might be more useful, but still, it kind of, it simulates a sort of a crude fly-through of the model. So we think as we move through the site, as we've sighted the homes, as we've thought about significant elevations, clusters of homes, we've created quite a rich and varied set of experiences that responds to the site and really creates the variety and the interest And again, to loop back to where the initial site planning process and town meeting brought us, we're really talking about, oops, back to my laser, to this portion of the site, working the home layout within the bounds of the setbacks as defined by zoning.
Can you go back one? So just to be clear, the, this is the roadway setback and this is the building setback?
Yep.
Yep, we've got some slides that deal with that.
Yeah, okay.
So I talked about it two, two or three of our meetings ago, the 550, and the language of the 550 setback was addressed. And you're familiar with the zoning and how no new town homes shall, new town homes units shall not be constructed less than 550 feet from an existing street, provided that one or two townhouse units designed with the appearance of a stable or carriage house in a traditional style and sighted to create a grouping with a condominium unit or units in an existing home of a similar style totaling no more than three units so as to give a unified and coherent traditional appearance to such groupings may be approved. And that was, of course, language that was developed, thinking of situations like Devon's. As, of course, we all know, we have Carberry Lane, and if we draw a 550-foot setback from its edge, it comes through buildings 20, excuse me, 30 and 31. So what to do with those, and the board has talked about that. In part, we understand from the previous paragraph and discussions of setbacks that zoning talks about things in several ways, including in terms of the 250-foot setback, defining it from the lot line fronting an existing street. And the implied condition that we'd all like to have carried it in there was that that also applied to, limited the 550 to Canton Ave. And how to deal with that. One possibility would be to amend the zoning. Another is to apply the zoning, and it's a little faint here, but there's an existing home here, that's this home, the guest house. One of the guest homes is located right there. And one approach to the 550 setback is to preserve that home and to create a new dwelling in the same way that is handled here under zoning, and to do the same here. And the thought would be to build on that guest home quality and to use the other guest home as inspiration. That home is located right here, right on this property line, pretty much. And to do something similar there to that form, resulting in a site plan that might look something like this, where we preserve the existing home, we have a freestanding, a single unit dwelling behind it within the 550 setback. We can have another single of this similar unit as we've used elsewhere as a single here and a slight adjustment to that duplex. And then, take the fourth unit and include it there where we have a single in the existing, the A unit there. I'll just toggle back and forth. It does a couple of things. It addresses the 550 setback issue, and I think it introduces some of the variety into this neighborhood that we've been hearing is lacking. By preserving the home, by creating a home behind it that works in concert with it as a little different scale, little different quality before moving up the hill into the eyebrow neighborhood. So we can come back to that or address any thoughts now.
I think you can keep going.
Okay. So the carriage house, we also touched upon at our, I think, our very first meeting, introducing the project to you. And so, in addition to the three homes that have been talked about and identified in an ongoing way, again, with Devon's house kind of coming in and out, and then ultimately in as a home to preserve, conversations with the historic commission in particular have highlighted the carriage house for preservation and.
So one of the things, I'll just jump in, we're going to run quickly through the issues around the historic, but really around the site planning issues. We know that that's a much more detailed discussion that we'll need to get into when we're here on architecture and historic, but we want to introduce that relative to the site plan issues tonight.
Okay.
All right, so this is not a replacement or a preempting of any later discussion with the board's involvement. So you're familiar with the commission's recommendation that the home be preserved, We've talked about this in the past and a few, two months ago now or so as well, that our summary of our response is that preserving it, the call to preserve it ignores a lot of the work and process that has gone on to date and the effort to sort of balance the whole range of site features that are, that we've laid out as features, buildings, trees, woods, metal, spaces, character to preserve, and then the impacts of saving it on those things. Something would have to give, and we would need to have to figure that out, where the values lie. And then, we also questioned the, what would be left of the building, in a sense, in terms of the things that make it something to save, to retain, may well be compromised by conversion in the way that the other structures, the other homes, aren't because they were built as dwellings. And then, we've also worked to relate the new construction and new homes to the existing homes to be retained in a way that works along the same lines, similar lines as the carriage home and some of the other buildings that are on-site. Sort of familiarize or refamiliarize yourselves with what the building looks like, front, side, and rear, its size. It's a large building. Its footprint is just a little bit smaller than the manor house. But since most of the second floor space is up in, under the roof, it, there's obviously less square footage inside the building.
I have a question. Was, do you have historic records to show whether this was added at some later date? And is that this?
That's that, yep. The, we, not that I know of, I don't think, looking at the building, that, I'm not sure if it's going to show up, but I know the foundation that you can see here is very much in keeping with the rest of the foundation. So it's not like that's block and this is stone. There are some pictures from, in the middle or the historic narrative that show some of the previous openings, the way they were configured for, you know, carriage entry. Whether this may have been open at one point, I think it was closed in already at the point which, you know, we have a picture of that being more of a barn entry. The detail of that little gable end, I mean, it's.
It just seems out of character with the rest of the structures.
And other things seem out of character with something that might have been slapped on.
That's what I mean. It looks like, in other words, if that were removed, you know, it reduces the size and it's probably not part of the original structure. But we can get to that if you want, just keep going.
Yep, so it's large, it, conversion would have to, whether for duplex or single use, would have to accommodate garages, egress, decks, things that, patios. So where it falls on the site plan, it affects four units. One issue with preservation is that as we look at the zoning and think about preserving existing structures, some effort to preserve existing context is important. So we've worked really hard, you know, to preserve. So we've worked really hard, you know, to preserve, you know, important site settings, characteristic surroundings of the homes that we're preserving. So whether it's, you know, some, there's limited options within the site plan and the envelope that the process has, you know, worked us towards for accomplishing some of the goals that are being asked here. And then how to work some of these solutions with some of the other things that we're also looking at, including the 550-foot setback.
So just a question for you, if you've thought about it. So this is, you said, 3,500 square feet in footprint, and that's 3,700 square feet footprint. You have two units in here. If you had two units here and a single here and a single there, you could get your four units, right?
So we'll walk through those options. So some thoughts in that direction would be if we can use, similar to how to treat those singles, for instance, in a way that would be appropriate to what you just suggested, would be to use some of the things that we've developed to cite those homes in close proximity in a way that barns, existing barns and structures were clustered would be an option. Conversion of the, of the building into two units. Building additions and modifications would have to be entertained to accommodate garages, other features as we would have to get into. We have the question of the 550-foot setback resolution and potential need to move other units around on site. And then the question would be as well if, whether it'd be an option to consider creating a farm, in quotes, farm cluster, perhaps without retaining the carriage house.
Can I ask a quick question? Oh, sorry. You mind? I just don't want to delay it, but so are what we're seeing here, what it looks like now, and what your ideas of to retain it, this is what you'd probably have to do?
No. This is the A-style unit that we've developed for use elsewhere on site, and it's shown here in a variety of different ways with cupola and different treatments. But it's a, it's a, we, you know, independent of this, had been working with that form on site.
So I guess my other question, because I thought I saw somewhere. So that, the way it looks now isn't really how it used to look, right? It was renovated in 96. What did it say?
Yeah, a couple of different points it was converted into dwelling.
So I guess my question would be really for the Historic Commission, what were they looking to have done? Because it looks like, like, is it still historic?
Mm-hmm.
So even though it's been changed.
So we'll put that question aside and focus on the site planning.
We'll need to talk about that one.
Yeah, because I'm just confused in how, what they're trying to get to.
Right down, hold it.
All right.
So I'm going to go through a series of slides that show what we've proposed. We've tried to save existing trees here. We have a utility corridor coming across the front of these, these homes. That's where the carriage house exists on site. So Cheryl, there's a single to either side with two more singles here. Doesn't work, I mean, it's tight. It's kind of overdone. So there's your, there's the duplex with two singles and whether, without looking into this, you know, more in garage options more, you know, is there room for something else there?
Well, if you go back one, four and five could, instead of being two singles, could be a duplex, right?
We are, you know...
A little less crowded then.
Right. We did talk about building 10, and it's building 10.
Right.
Last month about your questions on how it worked with the grades pushing into the slope. Some of those questions you had get exasper, exacerb, exacerb, my mouth is getting dry. You know what I'm saying? Buy a duplex unit and you, and bigger footprint. So we need to understand that.
Okay. Go ahead.
And then toggling back to the duplex. And then the other thing that this plan does is that elevation, we like all of our elevations, but that's not one that we think of as a, as a, as a front, or, you know, we like that one better. So perhaps we use one of those other homes to be kind of a, more of a entry piece with a barn, farm cluster behind. And whether that's a duplex that replaces the carriage house in a way that's reminiscent of the carriage house, or that's a duplex conversion of the carriage house.
I, this is one area of the plan that I felt was less satisfactory. So I do think the options that you're running through over there have potential for improvement of that part of the plan.
Yep. So I think, you know, what factors into sort of why this may be less satisfactory than hoped initially, you know, there's some existing trees here that on further review by our arborist and all of us, you know, we were preserving. There's nothing there to preserve. Invasives, dead trees, dying trees, broken trees. So we've, something that early on we were saving as a, sort of a mirrored cluster of existing vegetation is gone. The question does get more complicated if we go to thinking of six units here. That duplex is a possibility. And maybe not that option, or the one that we showed with the 550 with a duplex, a duplex, a duplex.
So this area has five, and you need, you would need to get to six if you change the plan for the 550 from Carberry Lane, right?
Right.
So, yeah, can you just run back through these real quick again?
Go all the way back.
Well, there's five, okay. And now you're adding the six, okay.
So that single, that number five here become a duplex.
Can I ask a question about the 550? We're going to try to address this at town meeting in February. Are you proposing that this is a preferred alternative to us fixing the language?
The, Ned can talk maybe more about the logistics of that.
I just thought it was resolved. That's always surprised to see there's now a new design alternative on the far side of the site.
Well, there's always a risk that it's not resolved.
Right.
Yeah.
So we're, I think we're...
The board also has to render a decision before town meeting.
I'm sorry?
The board will have to render a decision on our application.
I guess my question is, would you rather...
No, we're talking about a February 25th town meeting, Jack.
Would you rather the language be changed? Or would you rather propose a new design alternative on the far left side of your site? Great.
Language, as we discussed and voted, was submitted to the board of selectmen. That language, I believe, will be reviewed at their January 9th meeting.
Because maybe I'm just getting tired, but it seems like you're adding more there, and that doesn't that just kind of make more of a...
That's because of the 550.
That's because they're trying to address the other side of the site.
Yeah.
Which hopefully we don't have to worry about.
Right.
Five inches is more comfortable there than six, as we, I think it's long as demonstrated.
Oh, yeah. Five, five is a better fit than whether it's a duplex and three singles, or two duplexes and a single.
There's still the, so now that that's out of the way, but you still have the question about...
This is the carriage house, the yellow footprint.
Right.
And so due to the Historical Commission's interest in having them keep that, this exercise is looking at what that means from a land planning point of view, because we're focused on the land plan tonight.
Oh, yeah. No, I get it.
Yeah. So if they kept it, what does that mean to, what does that do to the land plan, and how can they modify the land plan and still keep their unit count, right?
Cheryl, we need to extend.
I, no. Guys, I started my day here at 7:15 this morning at the Capitol Planning Committee. I can't.
I won't fight you on that.
How many more slides do you have, Ellen?
It's only so many hours I can volunteer.
I think we can handle the rest very quickly. So, so this, instead of waving our hands around and showing units could go here, 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 we wanted to flip through a couple of quick, yep. So sidewalks, we talked about this. We are on board with adding the path to the next driveway and adding sidewalk around that side of the loop. And what that looks like is right there. So total pedestrian facilities are up above a mile now.
That's great.
The basin, we talked about quickly a month ago, about it looking pretty hard. We are working with Stand Tech and Deb and myself back and forth to do a couple of things, which is, one of your comments, we're softening the layout and the grading via Stand Tech. We are improving the performance specs of this basin. So there's, I'm not going to even try to say what those are, Deb, that's Deb's territory. Providing additional tree protection and reduced buffer impacts that, you know, we were getting into here, which we've been able to stay out of, and just to kind of, that's really faint, but I just wanted to kind of shut off all the, you know, the ornaments, the plants, so you can kind of see the basic outline of the basin now, and how that works between the sewer line, new path, and we have the split rail fence coming down the driveway here, and that'll parallel the path here to create that separation between the basin and the path. So that's that. We're also, Brian, I think you asked us to look at extending the vertical granite curve from, we had, you know, proposed taking it here. We'll take it up past the first curve. What happens there is the road section goes from 12-foot lanes to 11-foot lanes, so it's a transition point, and it takes it up around, out of view is the road hooks. And then lastly, lighting. This is as much just sort of to highlight where the lights are, so that all members are familiar with it, where the fixtures are, because the symbols are small in the drawings. There's an existing site light lighting here at, on, excuse me, on Canton Avenue, and then 11 new street lamps proposed in these locations with the big ovals. Then on a common clock, there'll be lighting at each home along the street edge, highlighting house address and the like, and then guard rail mounted low-level lighting at the crossings in those spots. And architectural aerial lighting fixture from the Providence line, you'll see the lighting unit is in the cap, so all the lights down for dark scapely. The pole spec is 10. The fixture itself is 31 inches, so that gets the light up about at the 12-foot mark. So we're not creating great big halos of light up there. That's it.
All right. So we're going to have to have another discussion of the land planning. You gave us a lot of things to think about. If you could send your presentation to Bill, so Bill, you can send it to us so we can think about it.
You addressed a number of our concerns, so thank you.
Yes, thank you. I did want, tonight, we don't have time, so maybe we can talk about which meeting, you can run through your open space calculation, because there's, you know, it's kind of clear in the bylaw how it needs to be done, and I want to make sure that you've demonstrated that compliance there. And then on the architectural, I mentioned one of the things had to do with their sort of standard or typicals, they're not addressing the various conditions you have. And we don't have elevations at all for your combinations of types DD and BB, or at least I didn't see them. So if you can ask Jim about that. I had asked before, combination DD and BB. So if you go back to that early plan you had where it showed, you know, and I looked through the architectural, I didn't see those elevations.
Okay.
And then again, from a zoning point of view, the zoning says two stories, 35 feet.
The zoning says two stories.
Well, there's, town council was looking at this, and we've been trying to get from Sue Galvin, the actual language from the vote. So we still need, because he sent to me that there was a sentence that's not in the, that was omitted in the unofficial version that we have. We're still tracking it down. So, but even two-story, the PUD doesn't define story, but elsewhere in our bylaw, Section 5, Height Regulations, story is defined as, "The story shall not include basement so long as the finished floor height of the first floor story is no more than four feet above the mean grade of the ground contiguous to the building." So your grades vary. You show a standard condition. I'd like for you to demonstrate that you're in compliance with that in terms of the way the story is defined. And then the bylaw also says on the square footage that the floor plans, I mean, the total area needs to include finished basement, but you don't include basement plans, so we don't know how much of the basement is finished. And I don't think it's included in your area calculations. There's also an average bedroom calculation is required.
I'll provide that.
So did you provide that in the narrative? Okay. I'll just have to go back and find that. Okay. And then something I mentioned, I think, at the prior meeting was that all of the units are elevated, and where you're an over 55 community, are you going to have any that you can enter without having to go up steps, sort of more accessible units? If you could ask Jim about that. You know, if you have 54 units, you know, you might have one or two, you know, 5% maybe that were accessible, but, I mean, if you were doing multifamily, it would be 5% required. So the other comment I have is just how many garage doors are facing the street, in which I think some of this land planning is addressing. And especially where you have two-car garages right next to each other, so you're basically seeing four overhead doors, garage doors, and, you know, a pretty wide paved area. Woodmere has it. It's not the best part of the plan of Woodmere. I went back through it over a couple days ago, walked around, looked at things again. And the more successful part of that is when you don't have as much of that, at least not next to one another. So here, in this planning, you had, you know, several, at least several of those strung together with that condition. So those are things for you to come back. Anybody else have any comments like that?
The last one is the garage doors, so that's, overall, I thought they did really well fitting into the contours and the landscaping.
I also wanted to say, I really liked the going from the May of '17 to what you've done now, because I do think the plan is much better. You know, the more time you've spent with it, the more time you've spent with the site, it's gotten better. And I think even what you showed us as refinements from what you submitted is better, so I think a few more of these things that we've talked about will even make it that much better. Okay. Any other comments then? So when do you think you want to pick up the land planning part, back to the schedule Do you want to pick it up with the architectural discussion, since there was, in the historical?
Yes.
Yes?
You mean in terms of this conversation and further conversation of back and forth between what you've just seen?
Yeah, because some of it's architecture and some of it's the... Yeah, because some of this is architecture and some of it's the land plan, right? So, and some of it's historic. So I think having that combination, that discussion would be-
Makes sense.
Makes sense, okay?
I just want to caution that we would be good with one topic tonight, but if we try to do three while we try to do all our other business, it might be, it might be a heavy.
I think we're going to have to talk about the 10 o'clock rule right now. We have a lot of stuff on our agendas, so.
Well, I worked for five and a half hours for free for the town of Milton today. I think I've hit my max. If you'd like to continue, you're free to do so.
I hear you, April. I'm just saying, we have a lot of stuff on our agendas and 10 o'clock. I don't know any other town that does this. I don't know any other town that does this, that has a 10 o'clock end rule, so.
Well, I mean, we spent a lot of time on our first application that we planned.
Well, I mean, we also like to hear from members of the public, which we don't even have time for on this one, which we, we took a fair amount of time on the last one. So, members of the public who want to talk about the land plan updates are going to need to attend the January 24th meeting or send comments via email to Bill Clark. This presentation will put, will be posted on the website. Bill, how soon?
Can you do that tomorrow?
Okay. Okay.
Tomorrow, Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you next Thursday.
Motion to continue to 7:00, I think we said 7:15, just in case we were done early, if you're alive.
Okay, yes, okay, that's fine.
At Milton High School.
Okay.
On January 10.
And the ability to project and everything is?
Yes.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.